Board members, we've called this meeting to order for July the 11th at Pender County Schools. We're glad each one of you could be with us tonight. There does seem to be a quarrel, so we'll call the meeting to order. At this time, we'll stand for our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Cordero, and I'll lead us in our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that you give us wisdom in the decisions that we make. Let us fully understand that what we do here not only impacts us now, but also the generation ahead. Amen. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. I'm going to ask at this time, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. What would you like to do, Ms. Burns?
I would like to move item 8.8 on the consent agenda to become item 9.6 on the action agenda. This is for Alternative Learning Accountability Plan for Pender Innovative Learning Academy.
Board members, did you hear Ms. Burns? Motion is to move 8.8 from consent to 9.6 on action. All right, there's a motion that's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries then. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that under number seven, information, that we add substitute teachers. Make it item 7.1.
Under information, 7.1, substitute teachers. Okay. Is there a second to that motion? I have a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seven, all opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
I'll have one-third if we could add 9.7 to just have an update from staff on the software access. Internet software access, sir.
Okay, 9.7, software access update. And that's under, you said action?
Action, yes, sir. Just in case the board would like to take action on that.
Okay. Can we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 9.7. Then will be software access update. All right, board members, is there anything else? I'm sure we can come up with something else.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and the agenda has been approved. Recognitions, there are none tonight. I'm sure next month, when we get back into the swing of our staff and students fully in school, we'll have that. So, there's no recognition. Number six, public comment. No one has signed up for public comment, and no one has called in for public comment tonight. So, that item will move on. Information, 7.1, substitute teachers. I'll ask Mr. Kevin Taylor, Assistant Superintendent, if he'd like to give us an update and maybe answer any board questions. Mr. Taylor.
Sir, we are currently working through ongoing of current employees of Pender County Schools. They've served us and have served us well as substitute teachers. We have contracted with ESS, a personnel company. So, they will essentially work for them, but they'll work through our school system. The pay will be the same. If they were paid at a certain rate with us, that pay will be honored. I have gone back and spoken with the company themselves, and we are able to do that. The, I have been in contact with several current substitute teachers that are expressing some concerns about the application process. So, I've worked with several high school principals, and we'll be able to allow our current substitute teachers to come into school sites to get some help with that, to be able to log into the technology and process through their application. As a side note, our HR staff have also assisted several substitute teachers as they've gone through that process. So, we're willing to work with them. All they have to do is reach out to us. I've returned several phone calls yesterday. Obviously, today we had an administrative meeting, so I haven't returned any phone calls today. But I will get on them tomorrow if I have anything to do. Do you guys have any questions regarding the current process?
Mr. Hall, since you asked for it to be put on the information, did you have anything, sir?
You just answered mine. I've had about five people contact me. But that, everything you said is the kind of concerns they had, and I just hope that whatever it takes, we find a way to keep them.
We certainly understand the importance of all of our employees, whether they be Dr. Reed Love or anyone else that we employ. We'll work with them to make sure that they are able to continue to do what they've done for us in the future.
Perfect.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for what you did for that, because obviously, our substitutes are so sorely needed right now, and to have them confused in any way about this process of going with ESS, it's not good. One question I did have is, are we going to be, this is also going to include substitute instructional assistants, right?
No.
It will not, just substitute teachers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Just substitute teachers.
Any other board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
Substitute teachers, do we have substitute bus drivers? Can some of the substitute teachers classify as a bus driver, or, you know, want to go to that role?
I'll defer that answer, because I don't want to misspeak to Brandon, if he's in the audience.
There are not many substitute teachers that drive, no, sir. Or no, they can't drive because of the limits of hours in the classroom. Because of the, now, I don't know if going with a contract company, that's going to change that.
Will you come on up to the front, please? I have, if you don't mind. That way, everyone can hear you and see your wonderful leadership. Come on up here, yeah.
Many of the substitute teachers cannot drive because of benefits, because of the hours. Now, going with a contract company, that may be changing. That would be a Ms. Nalan question, if they would fall under those.
How many substitute bus drivers, not in the classroom, but just those that can be called that are substitute?
Five to six that we can.
For the entire district?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is there any push on that, like recruitment or any kind of incentive trying to get the word out?
We're training people every day as much as we can. We do have people come in. Remember, it takes, on average, four months to get your bus license, the process is, because you have to go through DMV, because we share a trainer, two trainers between Brunswick and New Hanover. So, we have to work through their schedule also.
Wonderful.
So, it's still a lengthy process.
Yeah, we have no control over that.
No, sir. No, sir, because they're.
Is there alternate counties you've tried to send them to to get your license?
Yes, we have. And see, what we do, and now, we offer the class every two weeks virtually, the classroom piece. So, there's a class offered every two weeks, but there's still the driving that has to be done. So, they have to go out three to four days. That's dependent upon whether the trainer thinks they need that additional day of training. And so, and the summer is the hardest time to book them, because they have the driving schools for driver's ed, and they have their commercial schools during the summer. So, there's not much time for training, except late July, early August, so.
Okay.
And we can't train them after hours during school?
No, sir. We can't do it, no, sir.
Is it against the law, or is it just something they don't want to do, or y'all don't want to do?
There is, there is some counties trying to get approval from the state to do that, but we can't test them. We can train them, but they still have to be tested through the DMV.
Right, 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 yep. Are we training them after hours? Or making it readily available if they want to train them?
No, they, no, because they have those, the DPS, Department of, the bus trainer.
DPA, yep.
They have to do, issue permits for driver's ed, which means that most of the time, they're checking eyes after hours. You know, after three o'clock.
Now, you're referring to DMV now, is that right?
Well, they, but they check the eyes, though. The School Bus and Traffic Safety Section, DPS, actually goes and issues the permits for driver's ed. That's part of their duties.
Public safety?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All right, I don't have anything else.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Yeah, I've got, Mr. Taylor, this is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon.
I should have added it a minute ago when I was talking, but it slipped my mind. One of the, one of the things I heard about was, was like, in one case, they wanted a copy of a high school diploma from, you know, 40 years ago or something. And I just wonder, is there a way that, you know, things like licenses and, you know, for those that have them, things like that, can the school system share information?
As long as we can do it man-outward, yes.
Without it?
This is the middle of hiring season, too. So, I can tell you that Ms. Elizabeth and Ms. Valenda and Ms. Fran and Ms. Barhammer, they're swamped. But as long as, as long as they give us a little bit of time to do that, I feel like we can accommodate that.
That makes sense, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, board members, we now are at our consent part of our agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the consent?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent part of our agenda has been approved. Now, for our action part of our agenda is 9.1. And Mr. Taylor, I believe you're back up. That is the parking fee budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members. You have in front of you the executive summary. Sorry, I slipped on that a little bit. Basically, what you have is a plan that's been shared before the board meeting and modified via feedback that we've received from, from you guys. The school principals have developed, and these are high school principals only, obviously, because they're the only schools that have drivers, that drive their own cars to school. The fiscal implications are direct school-based expenditures based on any funds that are raised. And then, the recommendation of the committee of the board would be to approve the parking fee pursuant to 6325R and the budgets presented. I do have other, three of our high school principals with us, if you have specific questions about their schools. I'm willing to take any questions that you guys have as well.
And I want to thank the high school principals for coming up with this, and I know they have done some amending to their budget. Their presence here tonight is because I had reached out to our superintendent, and I just thought the ones who worked on the budget and have a vision for the new school year, it would be appropriate to have them come and speak for maybe a moment or answer any questions the board members have. So, at this time, I'm going to ask if Tops of High School's principal will come forward, and then we'll ask Heidi Trast, and then Pender High School. Dr. Avita?
Board chair.
Yes, sir. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the proposal. Is there any question that you had about the items? According to our board policy, we are to approve a dollar amount, but we are not to actually dictate their spending. But this is an opportunity for them to come and share with the board. Is there anything?
Good evening, and thank you for taking the time.
Yes, sir.
Much appreciated. I noticed that Pender High and Heidi Trask High had not really planned any use for the transition camps. I don't know if that's the appropriate term, but you understand what I'm referencing?
Yes, sir.
Because I think that was an important part of your request. Would you agree with that?
Not for your parking lot money, no, sir.
Not for parking?
Correct.
So, that gets to my question, which is, some of the other schools are using some of the funds for those transitions. Where are you getting those funds? Because that's a mandate by policy, right?
So, the past two years, I've been here in the district. We've been, that has been allotted through the district level, through state funding that was required to be spent because of the COVID. And so, we didn't do that. What we did, in addition to, and I think the terminology is what's confusing, is that we have our transition night during the year when they have theirs on campus and they use their funds. We do ours at night, and I give our teachers comp time, so they don't get paid. They come in, and then we have it at night, because when you have 500 incoming freshmen with their families and their siblings, there's no way, I mean, we're looking at 2,000 students almost now. There's no way that I can have that many people in the building at any given time. So, we do it that way, so that's the reason why it's not listed on there, sir.
So, I'm trying to understand your response in the context of the other high schools. So, it sounds like you're doing it in a different way that requires less local funds. Is that right?
I'm doing it in a way that's convenient for us, no, sir. Theirs was paid, I don't know how they're, I can only speak for Tops of High School. But we have, we allot our teachers' time, allotted comp time. They stay after. We have curriculum night, and it's broken down by subject, AP courses, CTE courses, driver's ed. We have any questions that the parents may ask, we have that information available. Then in the summer, what we do is, which has been paid for by the district the last two years, is we have summer freshman transition, which we bring them on the campus, and we have teachers, and right now, I think I have seven that are signed up. And we have different activities for them to get, where they actually navigate through the building so that they're not lost on the first day of school when 2,000 students show up.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, sir.
Any other board members have any questions? Thought you had a very good presentation, so thank you so much for the work you put into it. And it looks like you're ready for a new year at Tops of High School. So, you got your own little city over there.
Yes, sir, we do.
Yeah, so, thank you. You're doing an awesome job as principal over there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'd ask Mr. Hudson, principal of Heidi Trast, if he'll come up if there's any questions or if he has anything he would like to say.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Glad to be before you today. I think you have our budget in front of you. Do you have any questions for me about any of our spending?
Board members, I'll open it up then to the floor. Do any of you have any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Hudson?
I'd like to air the presentation before I ask any questions.
It'd be the same as written that we got, but if you'd like to go over it, it'd be fine. So, go ahead.
So, if you look at our 2023-24 budget, you can see where we've even allotted to buy the parking passes. You see everything we're trying to take out of that. That budget is listed, even down to our freshman transition and our senior transition. We allotted 2,500 for that to start with, and usually, that amount fluctuates depending on how many students are actually going to show up. We could easily have to borrow from other parts of this to pay for that. We're hoping to get as many as 60 to 70 kids showing up to those transition camps, but we allotted for all of them. So, if they all show up, and we can, we can all do the things we need to, and get our freshmen acclimated and get our seniors ready for their, one of their most important years. Further down, you see, we have our senior week activities. Again, another very, very important week for our student body, and it adds to the culture of our building. We would like to highlight, highlight our seniors, highlight their accomplishments. It's a big deal to get to that point. We want to make sure they enjoy their time, make sure their parents know that we appreciate the work they've done during that time. I think most important on here is our flex period and our enrichment period funding. We have 40 minutes a day where we can go back to our classes or go to our clubs. We need supplies for that. And honestly, that is an ongoing thing. So, as we get our clubs developed, as our enrichment classes need more supplies, they reach out to us, and we're able to have that funding to make sure we can do that every day for the school year. There's the normal test training snacks and things for our, for our staff. We go to test training, all the media things, all the waters and things that are there. That's what that is for. Other spirit events, we allotted for that. We have a minimum of six spirit events a year. It'll just raise the morale in the building, whether it be for our sports teams, whether it be for our academic awards, whether we're celebrating some, some students in CTE. We were trying to put a bigger push on celebrating our academics, so we're going, we allotted money for even that, even to the point of buying academic letters. So, those, those students that are hitting the grade point average, we're going to try to make sure they get a letter. Hopefully, we can increase that budget. I want to make sure every student in the building gets a chance to have a letter jacket. So, hopefully, we can get to that point. We did need a projection screen, you'll see that on there. We do have our events either in the gym, media center, anywhere. We usually need an extra screen for either staff meetings or district meetings or just for our meetings. So, that is allotted as well. We have our projectors, but sometimes, we don't need those big open spaces. We need smaller rooms where there's really no projector or screen to use. And a lot of times, the district comes out and uses our facilities, and they need that screen as well. So, we have that ready for them. Clear touch panels, big purchase, but a big deal, especially right this year for our adaptive students. I don't think we have the time to wait for the district to buy every classroom one. And if we do that, then we're going to be in that position where we're going to have to place everyone at the same time. I think it's imperative right now for our adaptive kids to keep progressing. They need something they can actually touch. If I walk into their class now, it's almost like they have to fake it. They touch a screen, but then somebody at the desk touches something, so it seems like they've actually touched the screen. We need to do a little better in that classroom, especially that classroom. Our mobile communications, our walkie-talkie system is old and outdated. They are starting to break down, and there's not much cell service in our buildings. When we have large events, games, whatever it may be, we need to be able to communicate. We cannot rely on cell service at any point, at any point during a, during a school day. If we know we need a good signal, we have to walk outside. And that's, that's not going to be a good deal if something is happening in the building. We need to get staff members from one place to another. And then, as always, I'm sorry, Mr. Taylor, I missed you. There's always the need for safety. As far as our budget is concerned, we want to save something for the next time we go, for the next, for the next thing that may come up, our seed money. So, we try to keep 500 just in case, but a lot of times, that 500 gets spent either in the transition camp. It may come out of the clear touch panels, but it's our goal to have some seed money going into the next year. We'll see about that. But hopefully, even if we were to buy everything here, we probably don't have enough money to do so. We're really, really relying on that parking lot money to buy so many things we really need that we can't get out of other budgets.
Is there any questions for Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I've got quite a few.
Okay.
Mr. Hudson, how, how are you, how are you prioritizing this? How are you, how are you prioritizing the expenditure?
Students first.
Students first, okay, so we're going to?
We take care of our student needs first. We take care of our safety needs. So, the walkie-talkies, we'll take some priority, because we do need that. Anything on here that's going directly to the students, hopefully, those touchscreen panels. I think that's a priority for our adaptive kids. So, we look to take care of our student needs first.
Okay, so, would you say that radios are going to be number one?
Radios and clear touch panels, yes, sir. Because radios are, they're for our safety.
Okay. Talking about the touch panels, how many, how many EC teachers do you have on staff?
EC teachers, I have two EC teachers, well, two adaptive EC teachers on staff and about four TAs, if we're, if we're all in.
Four TAs and two teachers, that's six. How many clear touch panels do we have in your school?
In my school?
Yep.
Every CTE classroom has one, thanks to Mr. Bates. And we have two, just two that are available for the whole school. And you'll have to come down to the media center and check those out and use them as you need them, which honestly, you'll never, probably use it upstairs. Far too expensive to just willy-nilly take, take it up the elevator. So, a lot of times, those teachers have to come down and use it in the media center or use it in another, another room.
Tell me, tell me this, why is, why is it mobile? Tell me, tell me this, why is, why is it mobile, the clear touch panels, why is it bouncing from class to class?
Just because we don't have one for every room, so if they want to use it...
Is the projector, is the projector in those teachers' rooms missing or broke, or...
No, not at all.
They just don't want to use them no more, or...
They, they, they do use them, but there may be some programs they want to actually use the clear touch panel for, or just a different way of instruction.
Okay, all right.
It's honestly, it's honestly another space for instruction.
Okay, so, what I'm, what I guess what I'm getting at is, next couple of questions, the projector screens, if we got you two more clear touch panels, would it be possible to take one of those screens that they're not going to be using and put in the gym?
The screens they're using aren't the pull-down screens.
They're motorized.
Those are the whiteboard type, type screens, that they're just projecting, projecting on that whiteboard.
Okay, so, I'm...
The, the projector screen we'll be using in the gym would be something we could take from room to room.
Okay, so you don't want a hard placement, is what you're saying?
No, no, sir.
Okay, I got you, all right.
No, sir.
All right, and letter jackets, are we buying, we're not buying a letter jacket for kids, right?
Well, we're, we're not there yet, but that's, that's the goal, the goal is to push academics to the point where we, they're getting those academic letters, if you get the academic letters, you got to put them on the jacket. So, the goal is to raise enough money in some way, shape, or form that we support our students and push academics to the point where it's as important as any sports team, anything else, the academic letters is going to be that important for our building.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Does any other board members have any comments, questions, concerns?
We, the school district spent some variety of different funds, I think Esther's funds, specifically on the clear touch panels, is that right, Dr. B. Love or Mr. Taylor? Is there, they, they just didn't make the cut, is that right?
I think 77, 77 got approved with Esther's funds, is that right?
Spread out throughout the entire district, yes, sir.
Okay, so they did get some, they just want more than they got, right?
Yes.
I just want to understand.
That is correct, yes, sir.
How it came to happen, okay. This is not a question for you, maybe for district staff or, or others would be, you know, for example, Topsail High School, do they do spirit events? They just don't use their parking funds for them, how do they pay for them, I guess would be my question, because it wasn't in their budget. So, I'm wondering, you know, why, why is one school using this money for the spirit events while another is not?
I, I think it just depends on what is done during the spirit events, if they're handing out t-shirts or other paraphernalia gifts, things like that, versus a pep rally in which something may not be given out, so, you know, each school may be doing a slightly different spirit event.
Got it, so you, is for basically giveaways at the event?
Yes.
Right, okay.
If there's any, say we have any activities that we want to do at this, at the spirit event, any kind of games or anything like that, if we need those supplies...
Like a cornhole board or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I don't know about all the other high schools, but I can say that Topsail does have a very active PTA.
Right.
Do, do you have a PTA still at your high school, sir?
Ever boost a club?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tony, one more question, if I can, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you can ask anything you like.
Highlights, highlights, what would you include in your, in your highlights? The highlights, you talked about highlights on your screen.
For the budget?
Yep.
Most important for me, walkie-talkies for safety, clear touch panels for our adaptive class, and based on our district directives, I don't think there's any getting around the transition camps, and we already have those planned and ready to go, gathering students for that now.
You're doing a wonderful job at your school, thank you, every time I go on your campus, teachers, staff, everyone, you know, so thank you for your leadership and what you're doing and your work on this budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, and additionally, what I would like to say is, I've talked to Mr. Hudson quite a few times when I've been in that school, but he has, as me and Dr. B. Love spoke one-on-one, he has come up with critical paths on incentivizing students, right? And that's, that's to be applauded, and that's why I asked you, what highlights would that include, right? So, I mean, would it include perfect attendance, you know, that's something...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Perfect attendance on honor roll, anything academic we can possibly support them to, support them with and, and celebrate them with, we're trying to celebrate all of their accomplishments.
But, so, that being said, Dr. B. Love, and also, in contrast, I don't want us to be giving participation trophies out when...
Oh, no, that's earned.
We're not, yeah, okay.
It's earned, they, they definitely earn their grades.
I understand.
We're, we're making a big push for some upper-level classes, things of that nature, so our, our students are working hard, it's going to be a great school year.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, I saved this school for last, because it is one of our new incoming principals, and he is just overflowing with joy of what's about to happen with the new school year, so I'll let him come up and introduce himself and give us a vision, and if you have any questions or comments, then we'll do that as well, so go ahead and introduce yourself for those that haven't met you already.
Great, Nick Paquette, principal, proud principal of Pender High School, Mr. Chair, Board Superintendent, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this work, the future is bright, I am excited, and also am a quick study, but if I can't provide you an answer to any question you may have, I'll get it for you. There's a lot to learn, a lot of people to meet, so many have introduced themselves to let me know their connection to Pender High School, and it clearly is a point of pride in our community. I also believe in, in my works and, and my conversations, one-on-one, whole group, and many more of those to have, with staff, with students, with you, the board, with community, that, that there, there is space to restore some of that pride, and some of the shine that once was, that we were so proud of, now gets spoken of at quieter decibels. And so, as a portion of this plan, I did my best to be fiscally responsible, to study the spending that had occurred before I arrived, and to also take that feedback and present to you items that were like my peers before me, focused on the safety of the school first and foremost, and then a heavy emphasis on the cultural aspects, the identity and the connection that students will have to the work we're going to do, and are already doing at Pender High School. Our staff is committed, they have shared with, with passion and great emotion, the great points of pride that they have within the school, many of the, the executive staff and the cabinet as well, and many supporting, and along that way, what we realize most is, maybe we, in, for a variety of reasons, took a pause on telling the story and that narrative in our, in our own hands, and celebrating people well, which is a cornerstone of what has been done on that campus since 1975. And it is incumbent upon me to recognize not only where we are academically, in the gains or regressions that may exist, as, as well as, again, a sense of pride within the community, to take up every offer that you can extend to me, to get around those who want to continue to support that school. I'll be speaking with the Rotary on this Thursday morning, I'm excited to do that, to listen, and also to share in ideas that we do have. Again, if you're pointing back to this presentation, there are some, some safety items there, including the passes themselves, being able to assign spaces to each student and be accountable for those spaces, and allow us to, to monitor that as we would instruction inside the building. Pender High School has so many points of pride, ROTC program, of course, being one of those, if you're looking along, and they have done such a, a job of developing a program of excellence that they have had opportunities to participate in competitions locally and regionally, and then at the national level as well, and at times need a little additional support there. Most of the activities that will then follow really are focused on the ability to provide for students a school that is filled with joy, one that they want to attend. I'm sure in other meetings and at other times, we'll be discussing attendance rates and the goals that we have, to create a space of which students want to engage with and want to experience the success that we will provide for them, such that they can graduate with integrity, and a diploma that ensures that they end up enrolled, employed, excuse me, enrolled, employed, or enlisted, that every purpose that we can put to our community locally and beyond is being made. I will pause there, as you can read, and I may have probably have blabbered on, I am excited, but do recognize very quickly, in overseeing some of the summer school operations with staff, that I saw very little branding and marketing in terms of the dress that students were wearing. As an incoming principal, I, I yet to have a Pender High School shirt that exists myself, I've worn all the red that I have, many have commented on it time and time again, and those seem like small things, but become major things as our students and our staff, and even myself are out in the community and we're interfacing with folks, that they know that there is quality being represented from the House of Pender High School, and so I'll pause there for questions if you have them.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Can you please elaborate vaguely about your security issues?
Yeah, unrelated to this funds or these funds specifically?
These funds specifically.
Okay, so, the, these funds, of course, having a parking pass, I think each school probably has that listed there, is a customary piece. At Pender High School, we're also working to ensure that our spaces are numbered, so we've made that request and are working with operations to assist us to also better identify what, what students should be and where they should be, and how we can monitor when that's not necessarily the case, and some in support of some of the behavioral data trends that exist in terms of skipping truancy, which is not the story of Pender High School, but it is growing in number and, in part, can be mitigated by simply our better supervision of where our adults are placed in duty placements, but also very open campus, as you all know, and so, ensuring that we have that in place is of utmost importance. And again, a part of that safety too, is simply centered on the reality that when our students go off campus, I'll use ROTC here, and groups are traveling, whether it be Beta Club who's gone and brought back some national rankings, and amazing work that is happening, our sports teams that are thriving, the ability to ensure that every student has the, the opportunity to participate, to me, is much more a safety argument than it is anything else. And so, some of those funds are, are listed in here as well, but in, in this nature, where, how the school is, is set up and its environment, a very open campus, I, I think the simple upgrade would be to ensure that our tag numbers match the appropriate spaces, that would just be a simple accounting mechanism for me as a building-level supervisor to understand who's on my campus to the extent that I can, and if something's out of place, be able to mitigate that as quickly as possible.
So, sir, what, what I ask you is, are you planning on buying placards, or are you planning on buying stickers? Something that we can reuse as a school, or something that they're going to stick in the windshield?
No, one-time use, if you use the same tag more than one year, you have compromised an element of security for your building. So, each year, though they may be placards, my intention is to actually buy a sticker that's on a hang tag, but I wouldn't use the same sticker more than one year in a row. The color of the sticker oftentimes is very helpful, we have limited staffing to accomplish the supervision of a parking lot, it is an element of risk to have an additional number of 150-plus cars that you're supervising in and out, but those simple signals of that tag that we know is this year's tag, and very quickly, of course, we learn, you know, what students are attached to what car and/or what tag number. And in the reality of the work, it helps us keep our school environment cleaner, if there's trash, we can have those conversations, rather than the current model, which is parking at whatever open spot is available for students, so that makes that a little trickier. And, you know, the reality is, we live in a day and a time where we have the opportunity, unfortunately, to have seen what happens when there are gaps in security, as it relates to the student parking lot being one of those key places, where many of the travesties that unfortunately we face in the public schoolhouse have originated. And so, anything we can do in that vein to give us the advantage to know better who is on our campus, and better to monitor issues should they come up, on the front end, give us a proactive opportunity to ensure that we are as safe as possible, given the conditions we have to work with.
Good.
All right.
Any other questions?
I just had a comment, as a proud Pender patriot, class of 84.
Amen.
I just wanted to say, thank you for trying to put a little bit, you know, trying to go out there and instill more, even more pride into Pender High, I think that you are a breath of fresh air out there, thank you, thank you for all your efforts.
I appreciate that, we'll hopefully honor that in the days to come.
You will.
Thank you for coming to Pender County.
Thank you, thanks for having me, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I will say this in visiting all three high schools, and I know all the board members, you've done the same, if not, I encourage you, please do so, you'll find out, all three of them have a different environment, but they're very welcoming, and different needs, there's no such thing as a cookie cutter need for each of these schools, and so I think that's one of the things that I've noticed in talking with the principals, is that what might be needed at one is definitely not going to be a need at another school, just like the parking attendant at Topsail, part of that budget money that they're using is to have that parking attendant, and I can only imagine what it would be like without someone there, it's bad enough at Heidi Trass and Pender, but with the traffic over there, as I said, it's almost like a small town, and so I'm thankful again for you principals that came out. Well, that is an action item, so, board members, do we have a motion then to approve what has been presented tonight, a 9.1 parking fee budget?
I make a motion to keep parking fees at $50 per space, and all proceeds of said fees to be used for school-based expenses at the principal's discretion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, board members, you understand the motion, do we have a second?
Can I make a, just a slight...
Amendment?
Yeah, is there any policy at all that is associated with any of the parking fees?
We have a policy that states that the board sets the fee of the policy, that policy out there does not include expenditures at the moment, it includes, now, as a board, you have the authority to examine and approve purchases and budget, but the parking policy does not currently state that.
So, could we just add to the motion then, that, you know, per policy or something of that?
Per established policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's already a policy that it's $50, well, I don't understand what we're trying to...
Mr. McPherson, you may, you may have to help us on this, but...
Well, I, what I think, that, I don't know, that the policy states that it's $50, does it?
Yes.
Policy states it's $50?
Yes.
So, do you need to do anything?
Well, the, the board took action at a previous meeting to suspend the fees.
Okay, so we reinstated?
Correct, so technically the policy now is zero, there's no, there's no fee.
Okay, so...
Oh, okay, well, that...
The proper motion is to simply reinstate, you know, the policy that you previously suspended.
Well, that...
Yes, or no?
No, I, I think probably the motion, what Ms. Burns was the proper motion, to approve the presentation of the fees.
Okay.
Because that way this year, that way next year, if there's amendment to anything, then it would be brought back to the board, so that, I wouldn't, if you're talking about policy, then that would need to go to a subcommittee, but I think for what she has made a motion would be appropriate at this time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the policy is, whatever policy there is, is followed.
Yes, sir.
Or that policy is attached to it in some way, that's what I mean.
No, I understand, you know...
I believe originally, Brandon, the motion, the motion was to amend the policy because of the $50 fee, and now we're at a point where we have it suspended.
No, the motion right now is, on the floor, is to approve the presentation of creating the $50 fee for parking.
Impose the fee, right, so we still haven't, we still haven't yet amended the original...
You don't have to amend it, it would still be, for future years, it would be for this, this school year.
He means where we suspended it.
Well, that would be for legal, legal, I'm not going to get into that cornfield, so I'll ask our legal if what we need to do.
Okay, so, you suspended the policy at a previous meeting, currently is to approve the presentation for the 23-24 school year, is that right, or is...
Um, well, my motion was...
I just want to make sure...
I understood, I understood...
And I'm a little confused right now, because I'm...
I understood, I understood your motion to be that we approve the fee of $50 and the funds will be used at the principal's discretion, is that what I heard you say?
For school-based expenses.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember hearing that.
Uh, would you want me to restate?
Yes, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Um, let me turn my mic, I make a motion to keep parking fees at $50 per space, and all proceeds of said fees to be used for school-based expenses at the principal's discretion.
And I wanted to add wording that says, as long as that follows policy.
Okay.
So, however, that would need to be worded, do you follow me, Beth?
Uh, I do, and I can amend that if you like.
Okay. As long as it's consistent with policy, would you say?
Yeah, it's consistent with policy. That's.
As per policy.
As per policy. To keep parking fees at fifty dollars to be
Used.
To be used.
I would say.
Expenses. School-based expenses.
At the principal's discretion. As per policy.
Would you consider substituting consistent with the budgets that have been proposed instead of school-based expenses?
I had no problem with the budgets that were proposed. Sure.
But, but your motion doesn't constrain the the use of the funds for the budgets. So at that point, I feel the budgets might become superfluous. You know, because if it's a school-based expense, I mean, who determines what that is? You know, basically, the, the school principals can say anything, you know, and I'm not saying that I don't have faith in them. I have a hundred percent faith in them. But I think that the whole point of going through this exercise is to give some parents some information about what what's going to be spent on. And I think that maybe a budget amendment of some kind might be better from a public.
Or we could give them levity to go ahead and spend it on whatever they need to, as long as it's school-based, and then turn in a budget to us at the end of the fiscal year. So we can see what they have spent it on.
Input, income, in, in and out. Exactly, yeah.
Okay. So to be, are we, are we sticking with to be used with, in the principal's discretion? Matt?
Yes.
Does everyone understand, for clarity, what was made as a motion? Does it need to be repeated by the attorney? Okay, if everyone understands it, then we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. This time we have discussion. Is there any discussion concerning the parking lot fee budget?
Is there a reason why the, why the parking pass has not, the policy has not been revised?
The policy committee was not met since that time to look at the policy. I'm on that policy committee myself and Mr. Cordero. And so we have not had a meeting for that. And with the summer schedule, we've not had an emergency call meeting for that purpose.
And I would ask that if you feel that the policy does need to be changed, obviously, when you go into policy committee, take a look at it. And if it does need it, then bring it back next, next board meeting, and we can take a look and see if the policy needs to be amended. For right now, I've got, I've got parents calling me, gentlemen, who are asking me when they're going to be, when their students are going to be able to purchase parking passes, especially seniors who are going to be going to, who are going to be going to Cape Fear Community College for our dual enrollment program. They're starting to get a little anxious. And my main goal tonight was to at least get something, let's get this train rolling again. So at least the principals can go out and start, you know, getting the parking passes distributed.
Okay, is there any comments, questions?
I would just say that I, I think it's a good idea for the policy committee to take a look at. I would just want to include that, that as a matter of policy, that every year the, the principals have to do the same exercise, you know, essentially, think about how they're going to plan the budget for these funds and what they'll plan to fund. And that we incorporate that in policy. And that would, I think, be a good step to take. But that would, as long as I don't hear any major objections over that, then I would have no issue with.
I don't have any, being on that committee with you, Mr. Cadera, I don't have any objections to that. Okay, is there any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Is there any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries three to one. Okay. This time then is nine point two consideration of sign-on bonuses for our PC staff. That you still?
I believe it is, yes, sir. So you have in front of you a consideration for sign-on bonuses to recruit hard-to-fill, to recruit individuals for hard-to-fill positions within our district, instructional positions. So in order to recruit highly qualified teachers to fill secondary math, science, and east exceptional children's positions, as well as open positions at, to Pender Innovative Learning Academy. Also to recruit bus drivers, consider a sign-on bonus of five thousand dollars for the teachers in those positions and a sign-on bonus of twenty-five hundred dollars for the bus drivers. Bonuses are obviously contingent upon funds that are available and at discretion of the superintendent. There are some options that are included in here. I would bring your attention to a couple of the things that are in there. For instance, a standard one-year teacher contract would not provide us the opportunity to obligate a teacher beyond that one-year contract. It'd be hard for us to have a sign-on bonus that says, you're going to work for us for three years, but we're going to make you sign a one-year contract. On a, a non-standard multi-year contract would allow us to provide a multi-year contract if we were to enter into that. However, just like they are obligated to carry out their end of the contract, so are we. There are a couple of options for distribution of funds. The five thousand dollars or the twenty-five hundred dollars all at once at one time. Or five hundred dollar installments over ten months, for example, or cutting it in half, whether you have twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that'd be great, twenty-five hundred and when they sign on at twenty-five hundred at Christmas time, which is traditionally how many districts do their, their bonuses. The option for bus drivers, still the same. It would be hard for us to put them under a contract because they are considered at-will employees. They're classified employees, not certified employees. So they typically don't sign a contract. Option would be, again, pay it all at once, pay it over the length of the one year and monthly installments, or to pay it, you know, two, two chunks, three chunks, however you want to chunk it. So there are some options in there. The fiscal implications would be, and this would be to provide fifty-five sign-on bonuses for teachers. Again, if that goes up or down, we would have to adjust that a little bit, just depending on the number of staff that we have hired. We're looking at two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand out of ESRS one-eight-one for the certified teaching positions. And at twenty bus drivers, twenty-five hundred out of ESRS one-eight-one would equal about fifty thousand dollars. Again, if those numbers increase or decrease, the amount of money spent on those two items would obviously decrease as well or increase, depending on the way it went. Our recommendation would be for the board to approve the sign-on bonuses so that we can move forward and fill some of these hard-to-fill positions that we have. Math is a struggle. Mr. Paquette is currently searching for.
For math teachers at Pender High School?
For math teachers, yeah. So very, we, this is a needed thing. Other districts around us have done this. We have been able to track teachers going from district to district. This is the last year of ESRS funds. So we want to get what we can, as quick as we can.
Okay, board members, you've had a presentation already that you've seen in your board packet. You've heard our assistant superintendent's recommendation of he and the staff. Is there any comments or questions before we take a vote?
Mr. Taylor, so, and from, this is obviously from the committee discussion, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding conceptually how this process will work. So we, for the sign-on bonuses, you know, we try to attract talent and we say, hey, you know, there's a certain obligation period where if you leave before that, you have to pay this back, right? And I think what we understood from the committee meeting was that the, because you use, or the school system uses a standard contract template, maybe that's not the right term, software program or whatever, standard state template, right, that it would be implemented via an amendment to that. Is that right?
Yes.
What do we, is that what we said along? So it's essentially amendment to, amendment to employment contract X, you know, First Amendment to Employment Contract, something like that, right? And it says, you will also get this X amount of dollars and your obligated period of service is Y, period of time. Well, is everything I stated correctly?
If you are saying it correctly.
Correct, okay. Okay, so I think I think I, I I know maybe others on the board would think this is getting into the weeds and I, that's fine with that. But I, I would want to look at that agreement first, and I would, I think the board should approve those agreements. So I, I think I would feel comfortable making a motion to direct staff to move forward as you've proposed. I, I think the framework of this looks great. But I think that I would direct staff to come back at our next meeting and present us with those actual amendments just to make sure that the attorney has time to think through it and then we can, you know, for example, you know, we can iron out the details of, you know, if it's a thirty-six month period of service, are they going to only have to pay back? Let's say they're in the twenty-fourth month of a thirty-six month period. They're going to have to pay back only twelve months that remain, or are they going to have to pay back the whole thirty-six months? Does that make sense? I asked an important detail that I would want to know before I bless this plan. And so I think until we can get those types of details ironed out in a contract, I, I think that we, I would be more comfortable directing you to proceed and staff to proceed through the superintendent. But with the idea that you, you would, does that make sense, that you would come back to us with the formal agreements?
It does. I, I think I would defer to Mr. McPherson on this a little bit. So there's a, so when we enter into a contract with an individual this one year, there may be an additional component on that, on the, on the addendum, so we'll call it an addendum for now. But that addendum is only good for that same one year. So it's, it's for the life of the contract. So once that contract runs out, the attached addendum also runs out.
Right. So maybe the attorney can speak to how, how this would work from an obli, you know, so especially for the, for the clawback provision, how would this work?
Sure. And so it, it depends on whether you're talking about a multi-year teacher contract versus a single one-year teacher contract. So under state law, you can enter into a contract with a teacher as this board for any period from one year or less than one year, depending on the particular situation, up to no more than four years. That's the maximum length. So, and, and essentially anywhere in between. As far as a clawback provision goes, I think the clawback provision depends on the length of the contract, right? And so if, if there is an obligation, say you enter into a one-year teaching contract, that obligation and the clawback provision typically can, can come in the two forms you've talked about. It can come in the, you didn't serve your full obligation of one year, therefore you owe me my entirety of the five thousand dollars back. Or it can come in the form of pro rata share.
Right, partial repayment.
Exactly. I think that if I'm staff and as your lawyer, helping Mr. Taylor put this together, I'd probably want some input right now before I come back to you with a grievance, what the preference is of this board.
My preference would be a full repayment. If you leave one day early, you owe back the whole amount of money.
Okay.
Because the whole point of this is to retain the teacher for the period of time that, you know, it's, we've, we've, and, and right now, I guess I'm talking about sign-on bonuses. Say, hey, you know, this teacher's going to come from X school district. As a result, they're going to get a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus. I think if you leave one day before five years, you, you got to give us back the, because then the, the problem is they hop districts where it's like, well, I can go here, here, but if I get a new business, or a new sign-on bonus from a new district, then I don't have to pay back any money, right? And then you kind of, then you have this narrative, I think that he actually referred to, where teachers are hopping districts.
Sure.
So I think the full repayment prevents that because then they're robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's just my opinion. I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on that.
Open, open to hear any, anybody's opinion.
What's, what's other county you're doing, Kevin?
One year.
One year? How much money is it?
It ranges, five thousand's pretty common.
What about our peers? So like Onslow, Brunswick, Hanover?
I have it written down. Let me see if I can find it.
And with such a, a small number of applicants in certain, these areas, I mean, it's, you know, I've spoke to one college that said that their number of graduates from the education department is just so, almost in half or even lower. And then those wanting to get in math education is just really almost nonexistent. And I would say if any parents are listening to this board meeting or any teachers that are listening to this is to really encourage, make education, being in it a priority, a passion. And I believe that that's what we can do and hopefully bring some of these graduates back from Topsail High School to teach it, Topsail, Pender High School to teach it, Pender High School.
I have some numbers here that were compiled.
If you'd like to share them.
That'd be great.
Yeah. I have some numbers here that were shared with me after some research by one of my colleagues. So Brunswick for math, this is speaking directly to math.
Yeah, go ahead.
Brunswick did a five thousand dollar recruitment incentive, must be licensed in math and assigned to math at least fifty percent of their positions. Columbus, five thousand dollar sign-on bonus. Duplin, three thousand. New Hanover tends to make things a little more difficult than maybe, than we do sometimes. They did seventy-five hundred, ninety-five hundred. They have different levels of different classes.
And what, what are the tiers? What's the differentiating criterion, criteria?
Alyssa, do you, you want to come up and explain that?
It's years of experience.
Years of experience.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We were not able to get anything from Onslow County. Union County was four thousand for English, math, and science. So, yeah, that's.
Were, did you get any, were there any clawbacks or it was just no obligation whatsoever?
Not that, not that we were able to discover.
Okay.
So, and I think the issue, the there's a couple of different options in there about how we pay or how we would fulfill this bonus. We could certainly do five thousand at once. But then we get into the object of paying it back or someone paying it back to us. We can do it into chunks, twenty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred. Or we could break it out into one, ten, one, a ten-month installment of five hundred dollars. That way you're getting, possibly, you're getting what you're, what you've worked for to earn. Does that make sense? So if you stay here for five months, you're going to get.
It's the fiscally safest model.
Right.
Right. But the least psychologically impactful.
Right, that's, that's, well, that.
It is. So that's why you have those options in your, in your packet, because we need to know kind of the direction to take on this.
Are two-year contracts common?
Are two-year contracts common? First year, if we hire people, no, they're not.
Is there a reason behind that?
Yes. Go ahead.
I mean, I'll tell you what my experience is.
All right, go ahead.
And when you have a stranger to the district, somebody who has no performance history with the district, what is generally done is we have no way to determine whether or not you're a good performer or a bad performer. So making a multi-year commitment to you based on lack of your performance for us is typically not done. What I have seen is I have seen teachers returning to a district from someplace else, getting a multi-year contract in order to keep people. And that is particularly common if somebody has left to chase money, is what I will call it. I'll call it exactly what it is. Some folks have left to chase money. If somebody is a highly desired area, if you are, if you're an excellent EC teacher and you have a history with a district, but you left to go chase some money, but a way to get you back is I can offer you a four-year deal to keep you? Yeah, I mean, that happens. Two-year contracts happen. They're less common. Mostly because, like I said, it is, it's one of those, I don't know you, you don't know me, you have the credentials, I respect you as a professional, but I can't make a long-term commitment to you because I don't know what you can do yet.
Our standard terms on our contract are thirty days' notice.
Yeah.
So the contract is written for a year. However, anyone can back out of that contract thirty days' notice as a teacher. Other levels of administration, et cetera, et cetera, have additional.
Notice requirements.
Requirements, right, in terms of time.
Is there a probationary period that serves for a teacher that's new to the district?
As they agree to it and write it.
That's, you want to get the weeds. I will. So it depends on, so their probationary period is not really a probationary period. They get a one-year contract that can be renewed every year.
Under state law.
Okay.
Automatically, or it can not be renewed.
At the end, at the end of the year.
Now, when you get really into the weeds a little bit, you can talk about beginning teachers and how they have a three-year span of time as a beginning teacher. So that's a little bit different, but it's not necessarily a probationary period, but it's a one-year contract that can be renewed every year.
Okay, my question is about funding for this. We're going to be using ESRS funds.
ESRS one-eight-one.
Okay, my understanding, yeah, ESRS one-eight-one. My understanding is that these funds go away, what, next year?
This is last year.
So if we are, so if we encumber these funds, I guess. So if we are, so if we encumber these funds, I guess is the best term. Can we, can we use them three years down? Can we continue to use it three years down the road? Or how are we going to do this if we do a three-year contract?
So September 30th of 2025 is the last date that we can use that funding source. So September 30th, 2025. 2024, sorry.
Esser 3, are we talking about Esser 3?
24.
24, 2024 Essers.
Which one?
23, 24.
24, 181.
181, yeah, that's, that's 2024.
2024, sorry. So we discussed, you know, the clause, clauses in there on the funding availability. But we have discussed putting things in place to make sure that we have other backup sources of funding to cover any long-term.
I can, I can only tell you what other colleagues and myself think. These other districts have put these bonuses out there and they've used Essers money to do so. The amount of attrition we've seen and mobility in teachers has increased. Was it because of COVID? Was it because of Essers money? Was it because of other factors? We don't know. But we feel like this three-year cycle coming to an end may eliminate some of this mobility in the end. Because I don't know of other districts, maybe some can afford $5,000 sign-on bonuses at a regular time. But without the extra Essers money, I don't think we could have afforded to do that.
So what I would say, Kevin, is been that we're behind the radar on the hiring of teachers and what I feel like. Is it possible that you could bust a 5,000 up in two increments, signing a two, a two-year contract? With the second year being an option. According to Brandon, it's within statutes. So it's either, it's either the staff approves them for their second year or the teacher would want to stay and retain that other $2,500. Providing that staff would agree to it.
And we would just have to pay the second installment before September 30th, 2024, right, Ms. Nolan?
Yep.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that, and what I'll say about that is it's a, it's a 2,500 bonus with the potential for five. If you're, if you have, so that, that is what it would be. I don't know if that hurts or helps.
I would sell it as a five.
Yeah, you sell it as a five, but it.
But just make them understand that they're not going to get the extra 25 until the second year.
Yeah.
Recruiting 101.
Right.
Yeah. Plus, it would give you another teacher for another year if they're up to standard.
And if they agree to stack.
Right.
Yeah, I would be, I would be fine with that. If you're looking for direction, Mr. Attorney.
I think we're both looking for direction.
No, so I would say.
Is that a form of a motion that's just been put out, Mr. Springer?
No, that's just, that's just where, where I'm coming from. I mean, Kevin was sharing his thoughts from staff and.
I'll, I'll make a motion to offer a sign-on bonus for these critical areas of math, science and any other critical areas that are determined by the superintendent for a bonus of $5,000 to be paid in two installments. The first installment, the first year of teaching and the second installment in, in the second year of teaching.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Does everyone understand the motion?
And 2,500 for bus drivers.
I, I thought that was going to be a separate motion. I was going to ask some, I have additional questions on that topic, ma'am. But thank you for mentioning it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries this time then. Is there another motion on the floor?
So you made a couple of comments on the, on the bus drivers and I was, you made an at-will comment specifically. Right?
A what comment?
That they're at-will employees. And so that made it problematic. And so I just, you're essentially saying that we couldn't do the, the two-year thing because they're at-will employees. Is that right?
We don't currently allow, we don't currently require them to sign a contract.
But they can be required to sign a contract for the bonus, right, Mr. Attorney?
They, they certainly could. I mean, it's going to.
Right. So I would do the same thing for, I mean, I think the same thing for bus drivers would be, you know, $2,500, yes, to split between two, two installments of $1,250 to be paid in the first and second years of employment. I see some consternation on your face.
No, 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 it's not a consternation. I'm thinking of unintended consequences. Not, not that I can think of any right now, but I think we, when I've had an opportunity to sit down and think through it. I just don't, I don't know that it does anything that creates them any less, makes them any less at-will. It just makes the obligation for them to pay back money in order to take the money, right? Like in order to take, like, the only way you're going to get this money, if you agree to drive for me for two years. And then sort of the clauses in there that I would think of are if you were dismissed for cause during your tenure, you got to pay me the money back.
Right.
In addition to, you know, if you choose not to stick around. You have to pay me, you know, the monetary sum of $2,500 back. The only additional thought I have is whether or not. And this, and this is a practical matter, is whether or not you're actually ever going to see that money again.
Well, that's another matter. We can worry about that in the future. And if we decide not to go after it, we decide not to go after it, you know?
You, you have an obligation under state law to go after it, whether or not, you know, how aggressively you go.
Well, yeah.
Doing, doing that is, I mean, you take people to small claims.
Matter, yeah, exactly.
And so that, right now, there's the only things I can think of. But I mean, happy to explore anything the board wants me to explore as far as that being the manner in which you want to do the, do the bonuses.
Do we know what neighboring counties are doing for their bus drivers as far as sign-on bonuses right now?
I'm sorry, I do not.
Okay.
Brandon, do you?
I've done a survey. I can get you that data. There is counties around us offering bonuses. I think, I know Onslow County does, New Hanover County does. I just don't know the amounts, but I have that data. I can get it for you. But it's, I know it's over $1,500. But I don't know the details of how they're distributing it because bus drivers are hourly paid, which means it's a different can of worms.
Brandon, what I say is when you get that data, add that to it if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Is there any motion?
I'll make a motion to offer a $2,500 sign-on bonus payable in two installments with a clawback provision similar to what we discussed with the teachers.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item for consideration is 9.3, I believe.
I'm earning my keep today, I guess.
Glutton for punishment.
What's that?
You're a glutton for punishment.
So this is a consideration of retention bonuses. We do recognize that we have positions that are hard to fill. And I think several of us have realized that we, we needed to do that to make sure that we do that in an equitable way. However, we do have a lot of very good staff. This would be a recommendation for a one-time, $1,000 retention bonus for all staff certified and classified as long as they're full-time, who worked for Pender County Schools last year. Based on our research, this has been common across the state as a way to combat staff shortages, to keep them employed with us. The cost of this would be roughly 1.5 million out of Essers 181. Again, based on the slight number changes, that may be a little bit less, a little bit more, but it'll be pretty close to that. We would recommend that the board consider this as a way to thank our staff for the hard work they have done. Other districts have done this in the past and I think it would be a good gesture. Especially when we're doing sign-on bonuses for teachers that are pretty sizable. I think this would help ensure that we do respect and care for what they have done for our district through the years.
Okay. Does everyone understand what's been presented to us then? Is there a motion on the floor to approve presentation?
I have one or two questions, if that's permissible. Mr. Attorney, please stop me if I'm asking an inappropriate question. But are there? We have a what? About 1,100 employees, something like that, give or take? What number would you say are currently on a performance improvement plan or have received in the past performance evaluation period, an unsatisfactory performance evaluation?
I can.
I'm just not talking about individuals, just raw numbers.
I can get that information.
I mean, could you ballpark it? Is it like 5%?
I wouldn't answer that question if you have with, I wouldn't ballpark it being something that's serious. I would just, I would make sure I have it, so I wouldn't give an answer.
So absent that information, I would, I would say, I would feel comfortable doing this only giving the retention bonus to those that are not currently on a performance improvement plan or having received a negative or unsatisfactory performance evaluation in the, in the past, let's say, two years. That's my feedback. I, I don't think, we shouldn't be trying to retain individuals that are not performing to our standards. And that, you know, I understand there may be people that disagree. I just wanted to share my opinion.
No, I would, I would say too, to add to that, Phil, and to support Dr. Bree Love and his convention that the three of us here went to, there seems to be an attendance problem, right? So to keep, to keep teachers in the classroom versus somewhere where they have obligate, you know, they have time they've, they've earned. But, you know, let's, let's stay in the classroom. Let's go to work when we don't want to, do the right thing. And if you have so many absences, that takes you out of the, takes you out of the equation to get the money.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
And it's, and it's a legal question.
Sure, I'm not a lawyer, though.
Would there be an exception made for individuals who have medical-based absences, FMLA-based absences? I'm thinking, I'm thinking of a situation where we create a problem for ourselves by doing a good thing. Like discriminating against somebody because they took time that they would have been entitled to. For example, pregnancy, or they had a surgery and whatever sort of limit we're putting on it, just ensuring that, that we don't create a problem by doing a good thing.
So in order to get FMLA, you have to be out by a cer, you have to be out for a certain amount of days, is that correct?
Yes, but, and in addition, you have to have a certain reason to.
Right, exactly.
And that's what I'm thinking. I'm not talking about just, you know, use of your personal leave. We're talking, I'm thinking, if somebody is out sick and they're using their sick leave and it's justified, I don't necessarily know that we should count that against somebody. That's, that's the only consideration I would have as, in, in making this sort of exception. Does that make sense? Like if they're, if they're legitimately out sick and they have used sick leave legitimately with a, with a doctor's note, I don't know that we should hold that against them.
So what I.
Just a consideration.
What I would say is if somebody is out more than 10 days, it's probably, it's probably a good possibility they got something medically wrong with them. And they should be checked out and begin with, right?
Sure.
That's where I would leave, that's where I would leave that.
I think it just means as long as they're not like on an action plan or if they've got a file full of disciplinary problems, that kind of, is that?
Well, I think, that was what I was saying. I think what Mr. Springer is trying to point out is, is someone that, that is, I don't want to say abusing, but basically using, using their, their vacation and sick time, maybe not sick, but vacation time in a way that might be detrimental to the learning environment, I guess. And so what I would say to that is I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Bree Love's judgment in that regard. So I would feel comfortable making a motion to provide the $1,000 bonus with the condition that no teacher or employee that is currently on a performance improvement plan or has received a negative performance evaluation within the last two years receives it and that the, the bonus is at the discretion of the superintendent. With, with the intent that if you feel that there is an issue with attendance or another issue that you have the discretion to decide not to afford that privilege of the bonus to a specific employee for, for good cause.
I'm personally not for what you're saying and the reason why I'm not for it, and I'll just speak plainly, is that I do not want to hold somebody accountable for what they might had or had not done based on a performance review from two years ago. I think that that is overstepping with the economic hardships that everyone is in right now. We need to keep our staff as, as motivated as possible. And I know that money is not why we get into education, but I think two years could be. They could have had just, they could have had a bad performance two years earlier. It could have been, for whatever reason, I don't know. But I, I do feel like that two years, I would, I would ask for grace. If you're going to put a time period on it, I would not, personally, I would like to ask for it not to be two years.
What, I mean, I'm open and I understand your, your argument entirely and I, I certainly, I think that's one of the reasons why God put you here. So what, what would you feel more comfortable with? What do you think would be reasonable?
I mean, I could, I would go, I mean, if you were going to put a time period on it. If you wanted, I, I just would say I wouldn't do any more than a year if that's what you're doing.
Would you feel comfortable with a year? Is that something you would support? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I think that I would be fine with a year. I just, I would like to come to a compromise and be someone that could say, okay, maybe you didn't have a one good year. I don't want to penalize you for that. It'd be just like a, a ball team. If they, they could have had a losing season, then next year pop it, be like NC State did in 83 and win the national championship. So I, I would just say that we have to go based on year by year possibly. And I, you know, I, we're not talking about $1,000. I mean, honestly, the last time I went bought groceries, I mean, we're not talking about. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm just saying we're not talking about a big amount of money here. A thousand dollars is a lot of money. I understand.
In my mind, we're talking about 1.5 million, not 1,000.
Well, we're talking about 1,000 per individual is what I'm saying.
I understand your argument.
And I understand your statements too, so that's where I, where I'd land. I don't get a vote unless it's time. Just letting you know, I can't support two years if it comes to my time.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we do the $1,000 bonus with the caveat that someone, someone that's currently on a performance improvement plan or received a negative performance evaluation within the last 12 months be qualified and then that the bonus additionally be subject to the discretion of the superintendent. He has the authority to extend that privilege to only the employees he feels are most qualified.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second with that motion?
Second.
Have a second with that motion. Is there any other discussion? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, at this time, we have 9.4. Just for clarification, does 9.5, should that have been reversed with 9.4? Or is this, would that be more appropriate to discuss 9.4 first?
I have 9.4 as considered modular utility connections change order.
I think the point is if the bus is not approved, we won't need a, is that too different? They're not related?
They're not related.
That's why, yeah, I was just asking.
I was saying they were the same, okay.
Great, okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The first item for this evening from operations is the modular utility connections at Surf City Elementary School. And for history, for Mr. Cudaro, Mr. Springer, back in October, we requested the Board of County Commissioners a lot. One point, approximately 1.2 million dollars, I don't have the exact figure, I apologize, for the purchase of two four-classroom modular units to be placed at Surf City Elementary School. The capacity for the facility is 750. They're currently at 838 students. So we would create four classrooms for their current fifth graders and also install a fourth grade. I mean, a four-classroom module to relocate students from North Topsail in the pre-K program because again, North Topsail is over capacity as well. In the past, Pender County Schools has purchased the modular units, had them set and then installed the utility connections ourselves using local vendors nearby. Same with decks and ramps. And we had intended to do the same thing this time. But I'll just read the caption, the summary points real quick and hopefully that'll explain why we're requesting the approval of this change order. When we executed the contract for the modular installation, it only included the construction and the installation of the modular unit without the utilities. The plan was to use local vendors to complete the connections. The expectation was for us to save costs and use local contractors. However, we have not been able to either get adequate responses from local contractors to our request and the ones that would have responded are actually higher than the. and the ones that would have responded are actually higher than the cost. Therefore, we would like to request to submit the change order for the installation and allow Schwartz to complete the connections with their contractors. The complete cost for both electrical and plumbing is $90,967.20, which would be paid from Capital Outlay, which is where the money was placed when it was given to us by the county commissioners.
Okay.
You can see the bid sheets that are included. For the, the plumbing contractor, we only, we had two people show up. One that was a subcontractor for Schwartz, and the other person showed up but failed to produce a bid, and no other contractors came to the meeting. As far as the electricity goes, we had Randy Schwartz, again, a subcontractor for Schwartz Modular, and Protech, and you can see the significant savings by using the contractor that Mr. Schwartz, his company uses.
What was the original budget for this?
1.186.
Well, just, just for this aspect? For the, this connections?
There was no specific budget for the connection, sir. When we requested the funding from the Board of County Commissioners, we included the anticipated costs for the modulators, and the additional costs were, we gathered from prior installations. That's why the total was 1.186, I think.
1.132.
1.132.
So with this included, will that, will we be within budget, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're well within budget.
All right, is there any questions, comments, board members, before we take a vote? All right, we'll go ahead. Is there a motion on the floor, then to approve action item number 9.4?
Make a motion.
Have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second?
Second.
Have a second and discussion. Not hearing any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 9.5.
9.5. 9.5 is a memorandum of agreement for NC DPI EV bus program. It's a memorandum, a three-party memorandum of agreement with Pender County Schools, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Transportation Services Division, and Duke Energy. The memorandum of understand, or agreement is with Duke Energy to install all the infrastructure required in order to provide the electrified charging stations for the five electric buses that NC DPI would be awarding us with the phase two of the Mercedes or BMW? I can't remember. I'm sorry. Volkswagen. I knew it was one of those foreign cars, but I couldn't remember which one.
It's because they cheated on all those smog tests.
Sir?
That's why, that's why we're getting it.
That's, that's exactly right. You're exactly right. They cheated and, and told fibs in their data research to, to get funding. That's exactly right. So they're having to pay it all back, and then some. We have been offered five EV buses to replace five of the current buses that are on the state replacement that are diesel buses. Several of the vehicles included in this package are buses that the state has recognized as having issues, VT365 engines in particular. And those have been a primary target for the state in replacing them. There are no adverse fiscal implications for this agreement. The installation of the infrastructure has, is arranged through Duke Power. We will only be responsible for the same operational costs as if they were a traditional diesel bus. And the reality is the operational costs are significantly less. If you just calculated electricity alone and gas alone, they're significant. But we don't have to utilize death fluid. We don't have engine oil. The brake systems are the same. And actually, if you let off the accelerator, the bus, you don't really use the brakes at all. It'll stop itself within a reasonable amount of time. So we recommend the approval of, by the Board of Education to enter into this agreement in hopes of having Duke install these. It would be at Pender Lee. Mr. Cudaro, one of the first meetings that we attended together, I mentioned the five EV buses, and I was not in favor of those, mostly because we were using multiple-tiered systems, which I felt like would jeopardize the reliability of the bus. However, when we went back and looked at some data, realizing that we only use single-tier buses for Pender Lee because it's a year-round school and doesn't have an elementary slash middle school feeder pattern, they're all within the same, the attendance zone, we felt like these buses would be a great fit there. Additionally, Duke has evaluated the site and has agreed to move forward with zero cost to the recipient, us, by extending a three-phase placement along the road opposite of Willard. I can't remember it right now because I don't usually travel that. I go to the right when I enter the school. Additionally, you know, there are three big issues or concerns that a lot of people have. Infrastructure is one of them, and the cost that it, that it takes to place that infrastructure, this is being taken care of. A second concern that a lot of people have is scheduling. Well, buses for school systems have the best opportunity for scheduling. We can go run a 30 to 40 mile route, come back to the school, and within three hours of charging, the bus is fully charged to go run actually over 138 miles right now. But the reality is we can run multiple routes on one charge. But because we run a route, come back to the school while the school's students attend, charge it, and then run another route, we're never going to use more than 50% of the charge of the battery at any given time. At Pender Lee, obviously, we could not do that in some of our other larger feeder patterns. You couldn't do that at H.I.T.R.A.S., for example, running a Maple Hill route. There's no way to do that. But at Pender Lee, we're able to accomplish that with the current restraints. I do have Phil Loughlin and Wes Webb from Carolina Thomas to answer specific questions. But I will say that in phase one of this project, five districts either ordered or slated to receive those buses. Two districts in particular are using them now. They've started using them around the turn of the year, and their data is very similar to the data that I just mentioned regarding cutting our costs to about 40% of what it would cost to actually operate and maintain the diesel buses. 21 districts are in phase two, and three districts are actually reordering buses from phase one. New Hanover County being our closest neighbor, who had a bus in phase one and has reordered buses for phase two. Onslow, Bladen, and Columbus are four other districts that are in our close proximity, touching us, and they are on the phase two order as well. Any questions for me operationally? But if you have specific questions regarding the Carolina Thomas bus, I would, I would like for Mr. Loughlin and Mr. Webb to answer those.
Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up, so that way if the board has any questions, just come up and introduce yourself individually.
I have one about the, that's going to be on your side, that has nothing to do with the bus.
Come on up, come on up to the podium.
I can ask it after they get done, though.
Board members, you have any, these are our representatives from Thomas. And do you have any questions for them about the bus itself? There is a prototype that's out in the parking lot. I did have opportunity to ride it. Mr. Brandon Smith, who's over at Transportation, for whatever reason, will not let me drive it. But it, it does drive like a golf cart with the smoothness of it. And if the bus driver, unlike regular automobiles, the bus driver was to be at some point not able to drive, or they passed out, or something happened, there's a safety feature on it that the bus does come to a slow stop. The batteries on the bus run down the center at the bottom. Each of them are not connected, so that way there are no chance, or very low chance at all of them having any kind of explosion, like you might have seen when these first electric vehicles, not buses, but vehicles come out. The air conditioning and everything else is just like riding a top-notch vehicle. So if you have any questions, please make sure to ask now.
I would like to add, since you mentioned fires, Mr. Smith. Last year, the Traffic Safety Division collected data across the country. There were 25 fires for every 100,000 electric vehicles created or built, sold. The opposite of our gasoline-powered vehicles, the burn or fire rate was 1,589 out of 100,000 vehicles sold. So I think that would pretty much dispel the concern or fear that we have regarding the EV buses or EV vehicles in general, having a fire risk higher than a gasoline or diesel engine.
You spoke about three-phase placement. What did that mean? I'm sorry.
Power is run on single-phase.
Oh, okay, you're talking about electricity. Got it, okay.
Sorry, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, no need to answer further. Did I hear that they take three hours to charge from zero to full? Is that right?
It's correct.
Approximately. That's the current rates. Right now, we're at 400 volt systems, the new.
Okay, that was going to be my other question, okay.
Excuse me?
You said, I was going to ask about the, the current, so 400 volts.
Well, currently 400 volts, going to 800 volts in the very near future.
So how long will that take?
Not really determined yet. It will increase. We're also increasing battery size as well. I think we're going to what, 242? I was on the, on the, some information that we just received. So there's the batteries advance, and the voltage increases. Then, you know, we don't have that exactly down yet, exactly what it is. Our electrical engineers can guess at stuff like that.
Right now, about three hours.
Yes, sir, approximately three.
And then the 138 miles in range, is that what I heard?
Yeah, we actually advertise 135 miles. In all the testing, we actually brought the bus down from Greensboro the day before yesterday or whatever, to have that bus down here. So we're, we're advertising 135 miles. And having worked at Thomas Corporate for 17 years, part of that time is chess engineering. Thomas is very conservative in regards to that.
Right.
And the driving that we did, I just took the, one of our demo units from Halifax, or excuse me, from Hillsborough, North Carolina to Halifax, it's 116 miles. It only consumes 61 percentage of the battery. And based off those numbers, it comes out more to 180. We don't advertise that. We're, we're advertising 135.
But that's for an empty bus?
That's an empty bus, but running wide open and running full AC back and forth.
Is the 138 miles, is that an empty bus as well?
No, sir, it's based, based off of load. You know, loads are going to vary. If you're in Cherokee, North Carolina, you're going to see a totally different, you're not going to see 135 miles. However, you may see 135 miles due to the regenerative system in the, in the bus that gives you power back. We're actually capturing about 18 kilowatt-hours of energy coming back, or excuse me, 18% coming back down the mountain, one of the areas up in Cherokee currently. It's based off of driver, you know, if you take a lead foot and put them in a Toyota Prius, they may get 30 miles per gallon, you know, so.
Mr. Taylor, did you speak with New Hanover? You said New Hanover County has how many of these?
They have, they'll have three. They have one right now, but they are ordering, they're in phase two of another order.
They have one?
New, New Hanover has one. They didn't choose us because we, we have roof-mounted air conditioning, and they were worried about, at the time, we only had roof mount air conditioning. They were, were worried about tearing something off the roof. That was their reason for going with someone else.
What do you mean tearing off something, like in an accident, or just to repair it, or what?
Limbs. If you, if you mount something on top of a roof and the folks.
So in an accident?
Not an accident. I guess it would be an accident if you hit a tree limb.
Well, yeah, of course.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, they don't intentionally do that.
Yeah, yeah. I would, certainly would hope they wouldn't. They were concerned about the roof mount air conditioning, so they chose someone else. We currently have underbody and roof, so that we offer both options. But their, my understanding is, is their bus has yet to be delivered, and it's from another manufacturer, so.
So they don't have a bus?
They have a bus, but it hasn't been delivered. They are.
So they've never used it?
It's not Thomas.
Have any of our peers, like Brunswick, or? So what I'm worried about is, you know, weather, obviously, cold and extreme heat affects performance of, of batteries in vehicles.
We have.
And so I'm wondering if we have any data from, you know, climates that, you know, are near us, right? New Hanover, Brunswick, Onslow, that if we have performance data, you know, this 138, I assume, was not tested in Pender County. So I, if you could, you know, speak to that, that'd be helpful.
I'm no longer in engineering at Thomas for buses, so I can't speak exactly to where it is. I would assume that it was tested at the Bend test facility that we used to use in Indiana, would be my guess. We have a unit that's in Toko, Alaska, one of the most extreme conditions on the planet. The director at Pitt County is from there, and he spent 20 minutes recently speaking to the great performance that they've seen on that bus up in, in Toko, Alaska. I can get you the data from where we did testing. I'm certain, I would feel very confident that it was from Indiana. Typically, that's the test facility that they use for stuff or where it is. But it's not a, it's not a grab from the air, you know, number that they just pulled out of there. So I'm certain.
Well, I was just wondering about the variables, you know, the climate and surrounding, you know, the temperature, the humidity, things of that nature.
It would be, I'm sure, again, I don't work for Thomas Engineering currently, but I would assume it'd be no different than what they do with the cluster chip test, where they take and subject the equipment to extreme conditions, whether it be heat or heater cooling, corrosion, et cetera.
How many buses?
Currently, I'm sorry.
No, please, ma'am, go ahead.
Currently, EVs do have conditioned control areas where the batteries are. If it, it will automatically turn on air conditioning in the summertime.
Performance as far as the mileage.
Right.
Not, not the climate within the vehicle.
But it does help to keep those batteries in a better operating condition whenever you do have them in a conditioned area, so. Yes, ma'am, that's, that's correct. We actually temperature control the batteries because there's an optimum, I think it's 70 degrees, somewhere give or take.
We keep it at 70, 70 for safety reasons.
But anyway, we take and we actually cool those batteries. Each cell is isolated, and they're also cooled and heated as needed. And also, some of that temperature is used for heating the bus as well.
And sir, what do you do?
I'm a sales rep for Carolina Thomas in Greensboro, North Carolina.
And what about you, sir?
The same.
Same, okay. So you may not know the answer to this question. That's fine if you don't. These batteries are good now, right? Is that what you're, okay. So what, why are they trying to re-engineer a new battery for a bigger cell? Is it because of longevity?
Well, they're, they're, just like every, most things, advancement in technology.
Right, right, is it?
Range.
Range, right, okay, all right. I don't have anything else.
How many buses does it take to service the Pender Lee area?
Five.
So that's why you chose five?
Yes, sir.
So you're, for this entire area, you're, you're taking away all the, I guess they're probably diesel-powered, I assume?
They are, yes, sir.
You're taking away all the diesel-powered vehicles, and you're replacing 100% of them with electric? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you consider a, a, a partial replacement approach?
Well, because of the placement of the infrastructure, that also seemed to be the best place to do it. We looked at C.F. Pope, Berg Almedal, and other places, but putting those charging stations in those parking lots, we felt like was more detrimental, potentially detrimental, people running over them, hitting the bollards and things of that nature.
Sorry, I'm confused. I was, I was saying, if we, I'm trying to think in, in the perspective of, if this doesn't work out, if there's, you know, some unknown negative that we're not aware of right now, because we've never used a bus, and New Hanover's never even used a bus, we don't really have any local data. If we find out it's a bad, you know, deal, we have no diesel buses left in this, in this traffic pattern, right? Under the current proposal? So what, did you consider maybe doing one or two instead of all of them? And why did you not consider doing all of them? Or why did you not consider doing a partial replacement with electric versus replacing all of them at once?
I think the offer was for us to get five buses.
So it was, you take five, or you get nothing. Is that right?
No, I'm not, I can't answer that. I don't speak to Mr. Kevin Harrison, Mr. Smith.
And actually, that was something that we talked about in the strategic planning meeting, because I too had that same concern. What if we get involved in this and we don't, and it's not something that's a good fit for us? We are not going to be getting all five buses at one time. We're going to be getting these buses over, what was it, a three-year period, I think? Or a two-year period? So we're not going to be getting all five buses. It's not going to be a straight turnover. It's going to be a gradual turnover, which would allow us, I think, a little bit of time and a little bit of, you know, give us a little bit of flexibility. If we, if we find that these buses aren't working, then that's okay. We can go back to our diesel buses.
Okay, so that was going to be my other question. If, if we don't like the electric buses, well, can we, how will we, can we just give them back and get diesel buses back? Or what, how does, what does that look like? Or are we stuck with the buses?
We've not got a clear answer.
We, we, Pender County is not the first county to get an electric bus. Currently, we have Cherokee, North Carolina.
I, I would prefer you answer my question, which is if we don't like the buses, what happens? If we want to send them back, can we send them back? What, what are the opportu, what are the options in that, in that scenario?
That's a question for DPI. That would be no different than if we deliver five diesel buses, you and you don't like them?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a process and procedure.
But we know we like diesel buses already, so it's not a.
Not all of them.
Okay, let's talk, let's talk in reality here. I'm, I'm trying to ask a question about what happens if we don't like the buses, and I have not heard an answer. Can nobody answer this question? If you can't answer the question, that's fine.[1778.91]
It's not for y'all to answer. That would be for our two people.
Okay.
Anybody, anybody in the room.
So, if it doesn't work, can we send the damn thing back?
No, we cannot.
Okay.
Okay, so the answer is no. We're stuck with them. Okay. Thank you for answering the question.
I make a motion that we, go ahead and vote on this.
So, you call a question, then?
Yeah, I don't make the motion. I'm just saying.
That was the end of my list of questions.
Okay, well, let me ask, is there any other questions or in?
I have one, I had one, but let me ask it before we go. So, in the state of North Carolina, our bus fuel is paid for by who? I want, in simple terms, so the public can understand the state. So, who's? State transportation allotment, like we get a state teaching allotment. Right. So, who's gonna pay the electric bill for charging the buses? Is it gonna be on a separate meter? Yes, sir. Okay, cool. Thanks. We already, that was one of the first things I addressed, because I don't want us to have to internally have to navigate the cost of power. Perfect, perfect.
All right, we've talked about it then, and so let's have, what's your pleasure, board? Is there any motions for this to approve it?
I made a motion that we approve the MOA for the NCDPI EV bus program.
All right, we have a motion of approval for 9.5, the EV bus and infrastructure. Is there a second? Let me clarify, this is means that there's, this is no charge to us. Everything is, so we're turning away free money if this is not approved, correct?
About $3.5 million.
$3.5 million if we don't approve this.
I've got a question then. How are we turning it away when we've already, I mean, they would have to, we've already got five buses, right?
Right.
Buses we buy are 150,000.
But the, the state replaces our buses, right?
Additionally, the infrastructure in and of itself is being paid for by them.
Does the state replace our buses?
Yes, sir.
Do they replace our buses with new buses? Or do, or do we get?
Right, so the diesel bus dies, you get a new diesel bus from the state, right?
Correct. So, say, what with the EV bus?
But if the EV bus doesn't work out, we can also get a diesel bus from the state.
We cannot. That's what they said. So, if we, if the, if the EV bus dies, do, can we choose to get a diesel bus?
When you say die, what do you mean?
Take it to the junkyard.
Let me, let me, let me rephrase. Thank you. That's a good question. So, if the, if the bus, if we determine the bus will not satisfy our operating requirements.
No, they will not replace.
We cannot go back to a diesel bus.
20 years old or 250,000 miles.
I don't think, yeah.
If it's a new engine, we have to buy a new engine.
If we wanna try this, I think we could do maybe one, but five at a time is too much for me. Definitely too much for me. So, if, you know, if staff wants to go back and, 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 I'm not saying we, I don't, I don't look at this as a binary thing. I think we can continue to explore this, but, you know, I think five buses, the entire route, given everything we discussed, is not in our, in the best interest of the school district at this time.
I would wanna see the fine print of the, the grant to make sure we're not succumb to have to take five. What the repercussions are, when and if, you know, the salesman said 135 miles, we get down to the winter time, you know, Cherokee is, if a different terrain, a different, it's like night and day comparison.
Well, I think in Cherokee and other places, the terrain is much more aggressive.
Correct.
Therefore, you're not gonna get the same surface that we're gonna get in the flat.
I concur. Penderly is about as flat as you can get, and I don't see where.
High probability we're gonna get a lot more.
Will the vendor guarantee 138 miles? Will you guarantee that?
Absolutely. Certainly above my pay grade, but.
So, he's not gonna give us a guarantee?
Well, that, I don't know if, just like, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what kinda guarantee, I mean, unless Moses comes down with the Ten Commandments.
Well, they're, I think we're gonna have a topic in just a moment where I'm gonna ask the same question. What level of guarantee do we need?
Well, let's, let's address this now then, okay? So, what do you wanna do as a board?
But Thomas does have mobile, you do have mobile maintenance that, that if something happens to the bus, it does come to the bus.
We have, we have between eight and 10, and, you know, we spoke to Pender and folks who are just asking about their service and so forth. We, we didn't just start doing this. We may have started electric buses a few years ago, but we're, we're, we're in this for the long haul. We don't, we're not pushing something. We're not pushing a snake oil. We're, we stand behind what we do, but I am certainly well below the pay grade to guarantee a warranty for anything that Thomas Bus or anyone else produces, but thank you very much.
Is there any other questions, comments? We had a motion on the floor, waiting for a second, and if the motion doesn't get a second, it dies, and then if somebody wanted to make a new motion, they can, so.
I would, what is the deadline for this? When, when does the drop dead date that we've gotta decide this by? They're waiting for this year's trove of buses on Pender County right now. Okay.
So, if we wait, if we wait another year, I mean, would we have an opportunity in the future, or is this like?
I do not think, I do not necessarily know that NCDPI will give us the same opportunity in the future. I just don't. They don't have to.
So, but I wanna be clear about, there's the word grant, free money's being thrown around, and I wanna be clear. We have buses right now that when they go bad, they are replaced at no cost to us by the state. The state pays for the fuel. So, the only thing that we're really getting as a grant is the charging stations, right?
I wouldn't say that.
What else are we getting?
We're getting a brand new bus, sir.
No, but we're getting.
The buses that are currently, the buses that they want to replace.
Are old. Are they old, but, yeah.
They cost about twice to three times as much to keep on the road every day.
And we're talking about, what, oil changing, parts falling off the bus, stuff like that?
Lots of different things.
How much money are we talking about? What's the delta? What's the delta between the maintenance cost on these buses and, and average buses?
I think it's about a dollar and 12 cents a mile, but I can't remember the exact figure. I looked at.
So, this is information that I think we should get before we make a decision?
50% maintenance savings.
The reason.
About 50, 54%, and that's a very conservative estimate compared to your current diesel buses running today that was provided to us, and then some data taken from another district that's running electric buses as well.
Yeah, we compared the last five years' data, the buses that's gonna be replaced, fuel, usage.
Right.
Oil cost, maintenance cost, and it was a 50% on.
What's that dollar and cents?
The electrical savings for maintenance was $97,077, and on fuel, it was $276,250.
So, we're not paying for fuel?
That's the, see what we're saying? That's the, the state pays for the fuel.
Okay.
They also pay for the power. Right. Well, yes. Instead of spending $97,000 a year to keep five buses on the road, we're currently spending almost $300,000 on, for those five buses we wanna replace. Right.
So, if you're talking about being a good store to taxpayers' money.
We're talking about state money, yes.
You know, which is still our money. If we're talking about being good stores and being, you know, then we, what you're presenting then is, not only is for environmental good stores, but also financial good stores with the taxpayers' money, this makes sense, is what I, is what I'm hearing in the presentation.
I understand that.
Okay.
So, I got one more question, too. What if, what if something happens to bus number one? How quick is it gonna be a turnaround to get in there and get it fixed?
There, there's, are you asking them or myself? I don't wanna get.
Sure, go ahead, whoever.
The, we, there are requirements in the state, specifications at state, when we have to respond, and when we don't do that, then counties and entities that are able to purchase off that state contract can file a complaint about it. Enough complaints can get you into some serious trouble. We actually have about four to five times the number of service vehicles and technicians that our competition has, and so we, my question would be, if it's, if it's okay, it would be back to Pender County. Have you had issues with your diesel buses previously? We, we sell 70% of the market share in state on replacements based off of our service and support, so.
How often, how often are your service texts out?
They're out daily. I mean, they're out daily. We cover, we, we've got approximately 12,000 to 14,000 buses operating in the state of North Carolina.
And these are brand new buses?
No, they're up to 25 years old, or maybe even older if they're older activity buses that are still in use. So, we have.
The electric buses are, are 25 years old?
No, sir, diesel, are diesel buses.
So, I'm saying, how often are your maintenance texts out for the electric buses?
Well, currently in the state of North Carolina, we don't have that many running. I mean, we have, we've got about four or five units that are up in Cherokee. We've got units that are getting ready to deliver to a charter school. This, the process from getting, submitting an application and grant to getting award and getting units built and call Duke Power and try to get a transformer and look at the lead times you're looking at. This is not a, you know, the, the grants just recently come out, and we're, we're the first, we've sold the majority in the state of North Carolina, and we're the first to deliver. I don't know of any other, I know of one unit total other than ours that we have outrun, that is currently running. We have Transylvania County just got delivered. We have Randolph County. We have Cherokee Boys and Girls Club that have four or five units that are operating. One of them has operated a full entire year, and we, we actually referenced, rather than, you know, ask us how it's going, you know, we've referenced that back to Pender, to these folks here, and, and it's been pretty good results and responses back from the folks that are operating. Virginia has, while we aren't the biggest, and I think the governor's a little bit upset because they were not awarded that many units in regards to, in comparison to South Carolina or Virginia, they were, they got limited units, but you've got Virginia that's got 200 and some units. You've got Montgomery County, Maryland, that's in the process of getting 360 some units, all from Thomas, and, you know, we're, we're clipping through it. We have, we are very capable. I've been in this business since 1989. We have over 800 years of experience within our fence at, at Carolina Thomas. Majority of us worked at Thomas Buses, and we're, we're in this for the long term. We're not, we're not selling things that we don't believe in. I've, I've been, I was an engineer for about 10-plus years at Thomas, and I've seen propane, CNG, hybrid. We, we had our own Sparky bus 20 years ago plus, that had a range of about four miles and weighed about 10 billion pounds. And so, we didn't push that. We didn't push the propane, the CNG. A lot of things has come down the pipe or whatever it is, and.
Why, why don't y'all push hydrogen?
Hydrogen, we're, we're waiting for Toyota and Cummins to go through that. They're working on that as we speak, and it's.
So, Wilmington's got a hydrogen bus?
Oh, yeah. Well, this is, it's a, I'm sure it's a totally different deal. I bet money that is a flat-nose front Transit city-style shuttle, and that package will not fit in, in a conventional-style bus. They are, there's, you know, there's been issues with hydrogen. There was just some issues here recently with Toyota's hydrogen race car, and so there's still some things that have to happen. Everybody remembers the Hindenburg.
Well, that's probably above your pay grade, so I probably wouldn't say anymore about that.
Yes, sir.
I just remember when, several years ago, we had the electoral, the electric car and electric truck programs over at Topsail High, and I see how far that this technology has, has come. I would like to be given, I would like to give this a chance, but I can also understand where you don't wanna devote an entire school's transportation to five EV buses. I had that same concern originally, and like I said, what kind of eased my concern with it was that we were not, this was not gonna be an instantaneous turnover, that we were looking at a gradual process of converting that fleet to EV. That's why I made the motion. I think this could be a good thing, but if anyone has a counter motion, I would like to see this at least be given a chance.
Well, I would just say to that, Beth, I mean, if we could go, if we could stop it too, Mike, there again, I don't know what, how the verbiage of the grant reads, but I'm not willing, I, under no circumstance am I ever gonna be willing to sacrifice five buses for five electric buses, and we end up with human error playing in the factor of somebody, some bus driver, I forgot to plug my bus in. Now, you've got 25 kids standing at a bus stop. We ain't got no, no repercussions on how we're.
But how many spare buses do we have over at the bus garage?
How many bus drivers forget to fill up their bus? I mean, it's.
But you can fill a bus up in five minutes or 10 minutes, you know?
But you can charge the electric bus.
How many spare buses do we have at the bus garage?
Yeah, we've had, we've had them accidentally leave the key on and the battery die overnight, human errors.
Mr. Taylor, did you speak to New Hanover County? I think I asked that, but you didn't have the opportunity to answer. Did you speak to New Hanover County?
No, sir, we haven't.
Why did you not?
We don't have one in operation.
I know, but they ordered one, right? Did you talk to them? So, my question is, they only chose to, to order what, two buses or one bus, you said? One bus?
They have one bus on order.
Why did they only choose to order one bus? Surely, of all school districts, because they're so large, they have the opportunity to spread the risk along a greater area.
Because that's all the state awarded. See, it was on the awards program.
So, how, how do you know that, though?
Because that's what the state awarded. They said it in their.
They focused on high poverty areas in particular with the five big.
Would they have wanted more?
I'm sorry?
Would they have wanted more? How do you know that if you didn't speak to them? So, what I'm trying to get at is, I think we should have done a lot of research that we didn't do, and I think we should table this because of that.
Well, what was the purpose? I'd just ask you this, Mr. Cordero. What's the purpose of, I mean, did they go speak to everyone else? I mean, we're talking about the here and now. If they don't have the bus there, and they only could get one bus, they voted to get the bus, is that right? I, I don't care if you talked to who, I'm, I'm, you talked to the sales representative, you're talking, why would you go out and talk, I mean, you're, I can give you, I can give you all these extra tasks to do, but it doesn't matter to me. And it gets to a point, we either need to just vote this thing up or vote it down and move on, but, I mean, we're talking about, it's not that complicated, folks.
We reached out to ones who were actually operating the buses to get their.
Well, that's what I would think.
And that's what I'm most concerned about.
So, the ones operating the buses, I couldn't care less, but the ones operating the bus.
I'm concerned with our schools and our students.
And when the ones operating the bus, are they satisfied with it? The ones operating it, if you've talked to, are they, are they okay with it?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
And does it where?
I'm sorry?
Who did you speak to? What school districts?
Randolph County, Cherokee, we spoke with Cherokee Boys Club. In fact, they've had one, they, the first one they've had, they've had for two years. They've got 11,000 miles on it. They recently ordered, they're waiting on two to come in.
They've had four, four years, that's not my territory, so I don't know specifically. I have enough to do without getting into the other guy's stuff, but I think they've delivered four additional units, and they are getting a couple more units, and they're in the process of applying on EPA Phase Two for 16 more.
They wanna replace their whole fleet. When I talked to him this morning, he sent me an email. His plans is to replace all the boy clubs' fleet at Cherokee, you know, Cherokee Reservation with electric buses, because they went from $750 a month fuel costs down to $400 a month electrical costs in, in their usage, and that's. And, and maybe I can shed a little bit of clarity, Mr. Cordero, on the, under Phase One of the VW grant, the diesel option was available. Most districts were able to replace with the diesel, diesel option, and they also had an option for electrical buses, you know, EV buses. Some districts elected to take one. That was on the first phase. Now, we're in the second phase, and you had, there was, you can request up to 10. I believe that was right. I know, I know it was over five, but we got awarded five. Some districts got awarded three, some got awarded one. You know, it was just based on how it all shook out as far as who, who received what. And from my understanding, we either take the five, I'll double check with DPI, or they're gonna award them somewhere else.
And somewhere else will take them.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanna speak out of turn by any means, so.
No, you're fine.
The, I think, and this is just my opinion, I can't, you know, at the end of the day, your taxpayers and constituents or whatever are gonna determine whether they like what you do or what, what you don't do. But the, at the end of the day, I think there's much more to this than, you know, okay, yeah, they pay for the fuel, but when you start looking at the, there's also things in regards to drivers. I mean, we've sat in here and heard tonight, while I've been here, you know, the issues of keeping drivers, getting drivers and keeping them. This bus has certainly helped with driver retention because of the decreased noise. One of the things I was speaking to some folks too about today is just simply a driver sitting up at the front of the bus yelling at a kid in the back of the bus to sit down. Well, the kid in the back of the bus probably didn't hear him, but the kid sitting directly behind the driver did, and they went home to mommy and daddy and complained that our mean old bus driver was yelling. You go back and roll back back the tape and see, see what transpired, and lo and behold, they were yelling. And so there's a lot of things, we haven't spoken about, you know, emissions, air quality, and a ton of different things, driver retention, less issues, opportunity cost of mechanics, now not having to do all this other work that they have to do. There's a lot more cost, and we could certainly elaborate on that, you know, for quite some time. We've provided some very generic, very quick information. It shows you guys getting about a 54% decrease in cost. I know part of that is fuel, fuel cost, but we were very, very conservative in doing that. We normally calculate 1.47 miles per kilowatt hour of energy. We actually took and used a much more conservative number for that or what it was in regards to, we didn't want to make the numbers twisted to, you know, to show that it benefited us or whatever it was. You guys buy fuel at $2.53 a gallon, I believe it is, and a bunch of different things, but there's a lot more to this than just, you know, getting technicians. I don't know, you guys may have all the technicians you need, but now instead of having to do all these oil changes and normal service things that you have to do, you now have an electric bus that doesn't get an oil change, twice, maybe three times a year, addition to all the other stuff that you have. You're not buying EGR coolers, turbos, everything else has to go with all the, the exhaust requirements and stuff that's required, and expensive equipment that's required on a diesel. But anyway, if you wish for more information, I'll hush. I'm about, about talking a little more than I should, but anyway, first additional info you need, we will certainly be glad to provide anything we can, so.
This is the last thing I'll say. I don't have much to add, but, you know, a lot of what's been discussed, 95% of what's been discussed this evening is not in our agenda packet. It's not in writing. All I see is this very, you know, boilerplate memorandum agreement with the Department of Public Instruction. I, I would want to see at the very least a detailed financial analysis of what are we currently paying for these five buses to operate them. I want details. I want the, the oil changes, you know, fuel obviously is, is not there. I, you can put the fuel on there if you want, but we know the state's paying for it, you know, et cetera, and then I want the comparison with the bus, because right now I just don't feel, I feel like, you know, he's on his phone trying to make calculations because I'm asking questions, and that doesn't make me feel very good. What's that?
He was looking up the email with that data.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, I'm sorry. That, it was email, it was in the, it was in the board packet or a separate email?
His email.
Oh, okay.
We sent it compares.
I thought, I thought you meant you sent an email to the board. Okay, so the board hasn't received any of that information. So, so you put this, you put this on the board's agenda. This is the first time that we're, that we're talking about it, and you expect us to make a decision on it, and the.
We're talking about the strategic planning committee, Sarah.
I'm not on the strategic planning committee.
Your committee members.
I get it.
Are supposed to share it with you.
Okay, well, that didn't happen, and I, I regret that, but my point is that this is the first time I'm hearing of this. All I have is these, this two-page agreement, and there's a lot of other claims being made, and I don't have any of it in writing, and I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable about it. I want a detailed financial analysis at the very least. I don't have anything else to say.
Any other comments, questions?
I don't think everybody is comfortable with voting until we get some questions answered. So what I meant by a deadline, I'm talking about like two days or three days, or, you know, it'd have to be a called thing, kind of like we did with the bell schedule. So.
They're, yeah, they're waiting on me to send the MOA back. I mean, it's.
DPI is waiting.
Yes, sir. They got to secure the POs so they can order the buses.
They can, they can wait.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to try it, but today.
I don't like being pressured and strong-armed.
Because we're, we're rushed, and I, I need about two days to check this out, and, I mean, I want to try it. I think it's a good idea, but.
Well, would you want to, we've got an, I think, there's possibly, I think there, right, there's, but it's died since there's not a second, and there's been enough talk that the motion probably has already gone to sleep, so, not you, but the motion itself. We're probably going to have to have a special call meeting, aren't we, Dr. Breedlove, about the food vendor and what's coming up in the next few days? Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. We can add this to that topic.
Okay, let, let's do this then, is, if it's all right with the board. I'm not making this decision for the board. You can make it yourself. I'll vote on it, but if we're going to do this, and if they can wait a day or two, a couple of days, and add that to it, then, then move forward, if that's how they, the board feels. Now, if you tell me that it's going to be no, I mean, it's, you know, that's the best I can get you right now, because I don't know, based on what the board members are saying, unless somebody wants to make a motion for something else.
I mean, I'll make a motion to table this to a future date until we can get a detailed financial analysis, and the only other thing I would really want to know is, can we do less than five buses? Can we contact DPI and say, hey, the board is receptive, we're really weary about doing five at once, could we, could maybe go down to, you know, a few less? Those are the two questions on my mind. I'm not speaking for everybody. If anybody else has any questions, those are the questions that I really would want answered.
Well, I can tell you that Penderly is probably a very good place to try it, though, because it's, it's a local area around the school, and it's, so don't get me wrong, I'm, I mean, I like the idea. It's not that I'm not in favor of it, I just, there's some unanswered questions, and, you know, we just need to make sure that everything is answered, and the, the other thing is, the idea that, okay, you either take this and it's going to work, or if it doesn't work, we're sorry, there's nothing you can do. I think that's the part that's bothering people. I mean.
I agree with that.
I would say that there's a 99.9% chance that yes, it'll work five.
But there's no district right now that they've talked to that are not working.
That's true.
And also, we've got to get to a point when people bring these presentations, especially our cabinet members are bringing this, and then we're questioning, you know, all this stuff, and we have a right to question anything you want to, but when you give me a number, if I'm going to doubt that number, then I'm doubting you as, as leading this, and so, if you're going on record that that's what you're telling us, I don't, I mean, that's the thing, you've asked, been asked a question, I feel like you've been given the answer. You have answered the question.
And I don't ask your numbers. I just, I mean, you, you don't know what we're going to ask when you get up here. That's the, so.
Well, no, and I mean, and our board packet could be 10,000 pages. I mean, so you don't know. They give us the basic information. They give us a board packet in a, in a timely manner, so if you want to read the board packet, or if you're waiting to the board meeting itself, you read the board packet, call the people up, and get the stuff done. But this stuff delaying all the time, this is, we've got to either move forward or just forget it. So whatever you want to do.
If y'all rather vote now.
Yeah, I'm fine with voting now.
I'll be voting no, buddy.
That, vote any way you want to.
I mean, I'd rather it be, I'd rather this thing have a chance.
We got a motion on the floor. I'm just making my statement on this.
And gentlemen, my apologies. You have been sent now the, the MOA for the, the bus program. I did have that in my strategic planning agenda, and I just pulled it out, copied it, and sent it by email to all of the board members, okay?
The MOA was in the board.
So the MOA is?
It was in, it was in the strategic planning agenda, and I just went and copied it and sent it to everyone.
It was in the board packet, but what Mr. Cordero is asking for is the financial report that we got, where we compared our five buses to five EV buses operating in Carris County, which we were glad to give you. We have that email.
Sir, for you and your co-part there, I would, I would like to know when they're supposed to be coming out with these better batteries, if you could find that information out.
Yeah, the, the ones I spoke of, the 800 volt?
Yeah.
Higher capacity. They'll actually be, if you order a bus today, they'll be on, they will be on that bus.
The new, the larger batteries would be the.
The 240.
I know the timeframe on the 700 volt.
Okay, 800 volt, yeah. Okay, yeah, I, I can get that information.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for your time and being willing to drive down to Pender County and share what's going on. Also, we're very happy with the buses we do have, and possibly if we can do business within the future. We look forward to doing that as well. Thank you for the time you spent with us.
We can never ask any more than the opportunity to speak on it, so thank you very much.
No, thank you.
That was a good presentation.
Thank you for your intervention yourself. Absolutely.
Yes.
Very good.
Wait a minute. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. We got a motion on the floor, my understanding, to table this. Then we're going to have a special call meeting to add it to it. Can I have a second?
Brandon, is that gonna, is that enough? Is this little couple of day delay going to mess you up? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll be glad. I'll get on the phone this morning to DPI, see what we can work out.
Okay, I'll second it then. Thanks.
Okay, I have a motion, seconded in discussion. Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, this time is, we have 9.6 that was moved over. Dr. Sawyer, I believe this is you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. The alternative schools participating in alternative school accountability system for the 23-24 school year were required by the State Board of Education to, to get the plan approved by the board. The Board of Education has to approve it at their meeting, and we've decided as a team that we're going to go with the Option B for the accountability model. In the, in the memorandum, it goes over Option B. There, there's several different options you can use, and the accountability system is something that you go into for schools that are, are in the alternative setting. It does not include virtual. At the end of the memorandum, we, there is a, an addition. The, the North Carolina State system does not allow virtual students to be in an alternative setting. It is a completely different school. It is not that setting. It's a program. So those students will be going back to their home schools in the virtual setting and being monitored by teachers in those buildings, but they cannot be a part of an alternative setting because they are not an alternative school. So we've already been working with the buildings to transfer those students back through Power School and get them monitored appropriately in the virtual programming, for those who want to stay in the virtual program. As far as the accountability system is, is concerned, this is a supplement for school performance, so it includes 20%, 20% student persistent, 20% school achievement, and in the school achievement, it includes EOGs for all grades, ACT work keys, graduation rate, math course rigor. There has to be three years of data in order to calculate school achievement, and then there's also 60% growth. So as we, as, as we were going through the process of deciding what plan to use, we decided to continue with the plan that we were currently using, especially knowing that we're, we're making some movements in, in Pila at this point.
Board members, you have any questions for Dr. Sawyer with the presentation that was in the packet and also what's been presented?
Yeah, I got, I got some questions. Ms. Nolan, this is directed toward you, and you may not know the answer. If you don't, I would ask that you try to get it to us when you can. I'm understanding today this virtual learning, this online learning, we're paying for two different, two different deals. Is that, is that true?
I think the, the question is, with our virtual learning, we use Apex, all right, as a credit recovery system, but when it comes, we also have North Carolina Virtual Public Schools that we use as an online tool as well. Is, is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
The two different versions that we have?
Yeah.
Edgenuity, yes, if we.
The edmentum edgenuity, yeah, but that's, the licenses that were purchased two years ago, we did not use all those licenses, so we're transferring those licenses over. We didn't lose them, so we're not paying any extra for those licenses this year. Yeah.
What, is it mandated by the state? We have to have virtual?
Is it mandated? No.
Can we, can we limit the virtual learning to, what, what kind of students do we have, Dr. Sawyer, doing virtual learning right now?
Well, there's a variety of, of reasons. We've spent a lot of time throughout the course of the last couple of months working with principals to reach out to students, to call parents, to try to get them back into the buildings, because in the buildings in person is the best place for them. There are some students that the best place for them to be served is virtual, and we work with them on grades and attendance and ensuring that they're successful, because any student that's in the virtual, virtual is, is a Pender County student, and we want them to be successful anyway, in any which way they're getting their education.
So.
So, discipline could be a reason. A student that has, having discipline issues, and the parent wants to, wants virtual, right? It could be a student that has a medical issue. It could be a student that has, I mean, there's, there's, there's tons of reasons that, that parents and students have chosen.
We're, we're, excuse me, Dr. Sawyer, we're providing virtual learning for people that have discipline problems?
If, if the parents choose to pull them out of school, that would be an option.
One of those, I believe that she's referring to if a student is long-term and not allowed in a brick-and-mortar building, we have to provide those educational services, and sometimes that is done through a virtual platform.
We can't send, we can't send that child to Pila for, then it's a discipline problem.
It depends, you know, there are some offenses that are expulsion, and not even Pila. That student can't even go to Pila, no, sir.
So, so, a little bit of apples and oranges here, so I'm going to step in and sort of explain the difference between an alternative school and alternative educational services. So alternative educational services is secondary determination that has to be made anytime you long-term suspend or expel a student. And so that alternative educational service can look like an online service, but it can also be any other variety that doesn't require face-to-face education. It could be face-to-face education, but generally speaking, that alternative educational service is different from a change in assignment to an alternative school. So an alternative school is not a long-term suspension or an expulsion. It's, I'm changing where you go to school. It's not, I'm long-term suspending you, but while you're long-term suspended, you're going to get educational services from this online platform. And so it's, it allows people to continue to make educational progress without having to be in a brick-and-mortar setting. And to sort of take that a step further, there are very limited set of circumstances. There's actually only six statutorily listed for why you can deny a person alternative educational services, and it's really hard to argue to either a judge or DPI, frankly, that someone is so bad that they cannot receive alternative educational services via an online platform, because it doesn't really impact. Now, I have had circumstances where I have had students who could not receive educational services through, through an online platform for their alternative educational services, but I'll tell you, that is a rare bird to see. I hope that, I hope that provides clarity. So.
Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I'm, I'm going to say this publicly, that as a parent, as my, myself as a parent, I am not going to put up with my child acting like a clown in school. And if we're, I feel like we're, we're at a point, if your child misbehaves in school, don't worry about it. If you get suspended or kicked out, expelled, we got alternate means to teach you. I feel like it's now the parent's responsibility to step up or step out and say, now you got kicked out of school, this is what you have to do, instead of the state stepping in and saying, oh, it's okay. It's okay if you got kicked out of school. We'll still educate you. Does that make sense to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I feel like we're, we're just throwing money away at, at senseless, undisciplined issues.
Well, but I also want to make the point, too, Mr. Springer, that some of these cases are not exactly, this is not punitive action. What this is, some of these cases are children who simply cannot, for whatever reason, whether it be social anxiety or whatever the case, are in a separate setting, because that is where they learn best.
I specified discipline problems. I didn't say anything about medical issues. Check children.
Concur, but how many, how many of these kids do you think that we would be looking at as far as would be discipline issue and, or just best setting, do you think? And I know that's a tough question, and I'm sorry.
It is. It is. It's a tough question, but, but you have to remember, too, with, with a lot of kids that have anxiety and other issues, discipline goes sometimes alongside by side, and it could be a manifestation of, of their disability, because they could be an EC student that has social anxiety and can't be in a classroom due to, you know, behavioral issues and things like that. So you can't always, you can't always say how many are, are disciplined when it could very simply be just a manifestation of their disability.
Hopefully, hopefully the parents aren't neglecting the child and to carrying the child to the doctor and getting the doctor's note, being able to bring us the proper paperwork to you, or, you know, the cabinet staff saying, hey, this child needs a different learning method. I'm, I am trying to say, kids that get in, look, I'm guilty of it when I was a kid. Fight's for a great thing. Right now, anymore? No. I mean, that's, that is the, that is not tolerated at any, any time.
We do everything we can to keep, to keep kids in the building face-to-face.
Right, right. Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other, any other questions, comments, board members? What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion approved, 9.6.
I'll second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Uh, no.
Not, not hearing any. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time is 9.7, software access update. Dr. Breedlove, if you'd like to address that. I believe you've got something back from the company.
Yes, sir, and I will send that out to the board. The update is exactly what we heard in the past, is they will not guarantee that there might be human involvement, and so will not guarantee that PII will not be shared. That's, in essence, what the letter says. I think it was also asked during that session about how much we pay for our current software. We currently pay $107,357.88 for link software, and as far as, I'm trying to see.
Give information on the contract, I think you asked that.
And, yes. And then, how long is, is the contract? Well, currently, we have. Well, currently, we have been with this vendor, what did we say, 20 years roughly?
Twenty plus.
Twenty-plus years on the contract. And the way it was explained to me is that state verifies certain contracts. I believe there's like three or four different vendors that have to apply through the state. And this current contract, do we know when this current contract is up with?
We just re-entered for this year, so it would go another year.
It's one year on a contract. That's kind of where we are on, on this. Like I said, it's $107,000 for this next year with LINK.
And that $107,000 includes multiple softwares, the financial script, child nutrition, so it's not just, just one set of finances.
Correct.
Ms. Nolan, does that also include Timekeeper?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So when somebody updates their address, how do you know, or maybe your staff knows or whoever, how do you know when they update their address? Does it send you a notification like an email or a text message or something?
They have updates within Timekeeper that go to electronically to HR. HR reviews them, and then they pass that through electronically, through different steps. And it goes from HR to like, Mr. Taylor would approve it, then myself, and then staff back. It's called a staff action.
Okay. Thank you. I asked, I asked that because I had a reimbursement check come to my house from the teacher that lived there before, and she had to come to the house and pick her check up today. Now, she hadn't lived in that house in three years, and she told me that she had submitted paperwork for an address change, and that's why I was asking if Timekeeper was running or come to you or however. I, I don't know. That's why I'm-
And, and there are electronic documents that they can submit, and let's just basically, some people like to do things the old-fashioned way and do it in writing and submit it rather than doing it through the Timekeeper. There are, are multiple options to change it.
Okay, alright.
Ms. Nolan and I had a very good meeting before the, before this evening's meeting, and I appreciate that very much. And I think as a result of that, I would have two suggestions for the board. The first, so I'll make a motion that we, so I guess, let me give a, a little bit of information first. One of the options that we discussed for the, for the, the PII aspect, the concern about that was, I understand that, you know, the concern that the vendors identified is that, you know, as a result of human error, when we're creating the role in the, in the system for a board member, let's say, to access limited things, that if someone screws up during that process, that it's possible we could have access to other information we're not supposed to have access to. And that we would explore a conditional guarantee with the vendor. So, you know, basically, we say, well, you know, we understand that human error is a part of everything, you know, much in the same way that Mr. Smith mentioned earlier, that, you know, the chance that EV bus will light on fire and, you know, but we live in the world of realities and we have to, you know, assess risk in some way and, you know, decide to drive our cars just because, or despite the fact that there's a small chance that we might get hit, you know, going down the road. And so I think that the probability of the human error aspect is remote enough to where we could, again, enter into a specific limit, conditional guarantee with the vendor that, you know, the vendor basically says, we will guarantee the security of all the PII in the system, that you don't have access to anything you're not supposed to have access to, with a caveat that if human error results in the creation of this role, that, you know, we're not held liable in that regard. So basically, we'd be accepting the small, finite chance that somebody screws up checking the wrong box or something in, in this error. So I, I'd ask Ms. Nolan if she would be open to exploring that option with the vendor, and she had indicated that she'd be willing to do that. And so I'd hope that, you know, maybe she could present us with that at the next meeting. So, I don't, I don't know that we need to vote on that. If, Ms. Nolan, or do you have the capacity to do that? Or would you prefer that, that we take a vote on that?
I prefer you take a vote, so that way, any action that she, um, that she is, does is not, it'd be directed by the board.
Thank you, sir.
If that's fine.
Yes, sir. I'll, so I'll make a motion that we direct the staff through Dr. Breedlove to explore the possibility with their current vendor to obtain a conditional guarantee that board members be given access in a secure manner, and that PII not be compromised, with a caveat that if there is human error that results, that the vendor would not be held liable.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a second? Any discussion?
Well, I think I've said this every time that this issue has come up. I feel that this is not so much an issue for me about the software and the private information. For me, this is an issue about overreach.
I understand.
So.
Okay, is there-
Question.
Yes, sir. What was your question?
So, their conditional guarantee, we would see that, is that gonna be like in writing or?
Yes, it would be in writing. So basically, the, the, under my motion essentially, she'd work with the vendor and, and the board's attorney, they would draft some kind of conditional guarantee that, that the company would offer, and then the board would have to approve that.
So we would, we would review that at the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Or, you know, whenever, I'm, hopefully the next meeting, but, you know, if the vendor takes longer, then the vendor takes longer. But we would get the chance to review it.
I don't mean the one like for Friday or whatever.
Right, yes, sir. Maybe next.
Yeah, our next, yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so all this, all this motion today will do is direct-
Staff.
Staff to get, to see if the company can do this.
Yes, sir.
Well, it are-
Right.
No, it's, um, let me make sure I'm right. We already know the company can't do it. What we're, this motion sounds like it's for is to say it again, where they're not gonna be held liable if something happens? Is that right?
We would be directing staff to contact the company and see if they would be willing to give us a conditional guarantee for security with the one exception of human error.
Okay.
Because that's all that they mentioned the last minute.
It's similar, yeah, it's similar, Mr. Hall, but, yeah.
So it's directing you to get a question answered for-
That's 100% right. And draft some, and draft some, some language, you know, maybe a modification to the contract or something like that, if, if she can work with you, attorney, to do that, by next meeting.
Alright.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I do have one more motion, if you'll permit, Mr. Chair.
Is it under the, um?
It's the same topic.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So it also, given that we haven't gone out for software in 20 years, I think it would behoove us, just to ensure that we're getting a good deal on what we're doing, and we have the appropriate capability, that staff publish a request for proposals to see how the market will respond in a variety of different circumstances. So I would, I would make a motion for staff to publish a request for proposals for enterprise resource management software no later than December 1st.
All right, because right now, Ms. Nolan, we're in a one-year, we just got back, if I understand correctly, is we're in a one-year with them now?
That's correct.
Okay, so December by December 1st.
And that's just the RFP, so, you know, it'll be a several-month-long process. The idea from my, and please correct me if my assumptions are wrong, that the best time to implement would be after your closeout in like July of next year or something like that? Ms. Nolan, or Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, do you have any issue with that? Do you want to talk about the cost?
Typically, year-end would be the best time or beginning of the new year, but there's no great time.
Well, I agree with that. I agree there's no great time to switch software, but.
I do want to state that finding out more about what an RFP would be with this type of software, it is pretty extensive. Just make sure everybody's aware. In my communication, I believe there's about a 12-page checklist of items that would have to be met. In order to oversee that 12-page checklist, we, we don't have the staff to be able to do that. We would have to, this would cost, this is going to cost the district to be able to do that level of work, and, because we will have to hire a third party to help us through this part, this process, because this is not your normal RFP. This is probably one of the most extensive RFPs that a school system go through, just because the magnitude of-
Probably hasn't been done in 20 years.
I don't know the reason.
It sounds like it could be one of the rea, and also, there's only, what, two vendors?
Currently, there's two new vendors-
Two new vendors.
Which are disastrous across the state. You can look at the headlines. The two prior vendors, which was LINK and the Ceritex Unpack, which was the AS400 product, those two are the ones that have been it for 30-plus years.
Yes.
So, and, and the state is going through a modernization process, and they have been for the prior two years. And with that came funding, because not only are you not, you're changing financial software and you're gonna pay for the financial software, but you're gonna change for the, the move. And it's very expensive, and DPI will pay for it if we choose from their four people.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, you could be looking at $300,000 just for the changeover process, not even talking about the cost of the financial software.
Okay.
You said DPI will pay for that if we choose from their list?
That's correct.
Okay.
But they will not pay for us bringing in another group to come up with this checkoff list and-
That would be on, that would be on-
That would come out of local funds.
And I, I don't know what that would, that would cost. But yes, that would come, that would come out of our local funds, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Let me ask you, Mr. McPherson, in the school districts that you work with, do they already have something similar that we could, is there anything that you could copy paste and borrow from another, another district with their approval or blessing that would, that we could do that maybe save us some time or money?
I definitely think I could explore. I know Wilson County Schools recently did an RFP. I can look at what they did. And the, the caveat I, I put on that is that I would, I would certainly send whatever we put together to our regulator to make sure it checks all their appropriate boxes. But yeah, I mean, there, we can certainly look at ways to save money on the creation of the RFP, in, in addition to just making sure, I mean, I would say this is not dissimilar to your child nutrition RFP, right? So when you guys go out, but you're one of the growing list of districts who outsources their child nutrition, so whenever we put it out, it has to go through a particular amount of vetting at the state level. This is a little different, because it's not, it is, it is purely a state where child nutrition is a state and federal regulatory arm. So I wouldn't imagine it's gonna be as extensive, because the regulation isn't as high, but I'm certainly happy to borrow from any, anybody I've ever done work for and happy to ask those questions.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we vote? Okay, there's been a motion and a second then for RFP. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We're just submitting for prices.
You want?
We're just submitting for prices, right? That's all we're at, you know, proposals. That's all we're doing. Is that right?
There's a cost with it as well.
Yeah, okay.
Does there have to be, is the question?
There's a cost to submit for proposals?
Motion dies. If somebody wants to make a motion then to have Mr. McPherson to come back with the proposed, something, then maybe that way, if you want to do that, I don't know, Ms. Burns or Mr. Hall, since you voted in the negative, that would be up to you. I can't make, but I understand your concerns about taking local funds for that and not knowing what, how much it's gonna be.
That's what your superintendent said.
I would, I mean, if, if you're willing to, Dr. Breedlove, if we could do some research on it-
Yes, sir.
I think that would be helpful, certainly.
Well, yeah, just, just, just like how we were talking about staff bringing stuff in and we're not fully got all the information, maybe that would be-
Yes, sir.
Something, since we don't have the full information tonight, this would be the other side of the coin, where we would be guilty of what we're assuming the board staff is doing. So, let's get the information and come back to the, to the game with it. Is there anything else? Mr. Cudaro, 9.7, did you want to vote on?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Okay. At this time then, comments from, let me make sure, is there anything else? Because I know we had several adjustments, but I think that's what I have.
That's, that's consistent.
That is correct, okay.
Yes, sir.
This time then is comments from our board members, and we'll start down with you, Mr. Springer.
Yeah, so I want to make a correction in the last board meeting. I said there was drainage problems at West Pender. That is not the case. It's a, it's a water tank issue. Is that right, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not gonna bring that issue up at this time, but I do want to make that correction that is, I feel like it's a bigger problem, but it, it may be equivalent or lateral, lateral to, but it is currently underway of getting, getting rid of pairs that it, it currently needs. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burns?
Just have a great summer, summertime. No comment.
Okay. Mr. Cudaro?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
None.
Okay. Just a reminder to the public that July 13th, from 3:00 to 7:00, is open house for Penderly School. We are hoping that they'll have a great upcoming open house. There will be a food truck there, so that's exciting. So if you are in that area, I encourage you, if a parent, to remember that date, July 13th. Also, I just, also I just want to make sure that everyone knows that what we have tonight, even though we might not have total agreement on a lot of issues, that's fine. You don't have total agreement in your family, I'm sure, but what we want to do is, is to make Pender as strong as it can. One quote I want to leave you with to encourage you tonight, "Life is about 10% about what happens to you and 90% of how you react to it." And so I think with the new upcoming school year, for our staff to remember, regardless of what happens to us in this upcoming school year, 90% of how effective you probably will be, and this board as well, is how we respond to that. So thank you for being here tonight. I asked our attorney if he has any comments?
Not tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'll ask our superintendent if he has any comments?
Yes, I just want to redact something that was said at a previous meeting. A question was asked, the purpose of an audit, and I just want to, we did ask our auditor about the responsibilities of an audit, and I just want to clarify what Andy Deal, our CPA auditor, his response was, whether or not, I think the question was really if an audit's purpose was to detect fraud. All right? And I know the answer that was provided was, yes, fraud, but we did get a clarifying comment from our auditor, and I just want to clarify that, here's what, here's what he wrote. He said, "Our objectives for financial statements, auditor's responsibilities for financial statements, our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free of material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error or to, and to issue an auditor's report. That includes in it our opinions." He goes on to say, just, there's a lot of things in this statement, but ultimately, our auditor says, audits are not designated specifically to detect fraud. All right? And I think that's important to, to clarify. And I just wanted to, our board to know that, you know, we always try and answer the best that we can as, as fast as we can to get to that information, but we do, you know, we do make mistakes sometimes, or say too much, or too little, and, and those type of things. And I just, I just wanted to clarify that and, to the board, that it is, the sole purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud. It could be a part of it, but it's not the, the sole purpose there. With that being said, I do want to just talk through a couple of comments that I have. Summer free meals is big in, in Pender County schools. That's in full swing through the partnership with No Kid Hungry, North Carolina NCDPI. Pender County is providing those free meals to any child- Pender County is providing those free meals to any child 18 and under. The sites are Malpas Corner, CF Pope, and Rocky Point Elementary in our district. And that will go through August the 16th. For more information, any family can contact us at 910-259-2887. Also, on our website, on the front page of our website, is a link to fill out that form if you desire to have that service. July 17th and 18th, I look forward to our core training with the North Carolina State Board Association. And so that is coming up, and so, like I said, I'm looking forward to that. Pender Lee School, yes, it's that time of year. We are starting school again out at Pender Lee. That's our year-round school, and after a short break, they are gonna be back in session next week. They have teacher workdays going on at this point all week long, but they will start their first day on July 17th. August 7th, Pender Early College High School students will return to school as well. August 8th, at 6:00 PM is our next regular Board of Education meeting. And August 22nd, Pender County Schools kicks... We have our kickoff conference for all of our traditional schools that are not on the year-round calendar, but certainly Pender Lee is also invited in that, but that is our kickoff to start the year. You know, we had our summer leadership at CFCC in Wilmington, had a great start. Today, we finished off our third day after about a month or so. We finished our third day, and it was a fantastic day with school leaders, with teachers that were invited by teams to work on their data, to work on PLCs, and to set in motion their plan for the upcoming school year and goals. And I want to thank Dr. Sawyer and cabinet staff for being there and setting that up. What a fantastic day it was and a fantastic job. And I want to thank all of our principals and teachers who were there, who worked all day long so that we can have a 23-24 school year that is outstanding and focused on three items. One academic goal, one cultural goal, and one safety goal. That's what we are gonna ask of them, and I've said this to principals, and we are working towards this. But at the end of the summer, principals will sit down with cabinet, and cabinet will meet with every single principal to go through their goals for the year. And the last question that I will ask them is, what do you need from us? Because I think that's important. In order for them to accomplish their goals, they need to have a venue where they can say, okay, here's what we're doing, and here's what their needs are. Within reason, we need to be able to answer that and be able to provide that so that they can accomplish their goals to the best of their ability. And then the last item I have is August 28th, traditional Pender County School students return to school. With that all being said, just kind of listening to tonight's board meeting and that, I just want to say that, you know, I am thankful for our team. We work extremely hard. I'm also thankful for our board, and I appreciate what Mr. Smith has said. And I know it takes a long time, and there's a lot of discussion, and we will always do our best to answer as many questions as we can to the board. We constantly work around trust and inspire, and that's really what we're all about. But sometimes that can be messy at times, and I appreciate that level of work. We will always remain professional. We will always remain driven because our students deserve it, and that's who we are. That's what we do. That's the life we've chosen as educators. We will work to that end for Pender County students, for Pender County families. And that speaks for everybody in this room, including the board, the superintendent, and around the horn with cabinet. It is a pleasure to be here. We will continue to work to serve, and we will continue to honor those who came before us and making sure that Pender County Schools is our goal and will be and always will be. We will be the best school system in the state. Why shouldn't we be? Why do we need to allow other school systems to try and vie for that honor? That's who we are as Pender County Schools. That's who we should be and always should strive to be. And I come back to this, and sometimes it can be messy. And but the most important things in life are the things that we work hardest for. And I think that's a testament to the school system, and the people that work in the school system work very hard, and they appreciate every opportunity they have to shine. So thank you all very much, and I hope that the next... Over the next several weeks, everybody gets a little rest with summer. But thank you very much. And board chair and board members, that concludes the superintendent's... Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent B. Love. At this time, is there a motion for closed session?
I move that the Board of Education enter into closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 United States Code 1232G and NCGS 115C-402.
We have a motion for a floor for closed session.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, closed session? Not hearing any. We're in closed session.
Make a motion that we come out of closed session.
We have a motion to come out of closed session, can I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I have a motion to approve item 13-1, the human resource report?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, can I have a second?
A second?
Any comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is this time, is there any other items that need to be voted on? Not hearing any then? We will also, we're going to have a special call meeting that we will be announcing.
You...
Go ahead, sir, I apologize.
I was going to ask if it's easier for Dr. Releve, actually, we can motion to...
Go on recess.
To go on recess until Friday, if, that way you don't have to do your notice, is that okay?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
I'll make a motion to recess this meeting until 3:00 p.m. on Friday. I'll give you the exact date, just in case anybody listening wants to join us, that way they'll have the proper notice. It'd be Friday, July 14th at 3:00 p.m.
Have a motion for recess Friday, at that time, 3 o'clock.
A second.
Have a second, any discussion, and it will be a virtual meeting. All in favor?